Good morning. It is 9:09 a.m. Despite what that clock says, it is wrong. Welcome to the first committee of the whole for the 2022-23 school year. We have a few colleagues who are joining in the next couple of minutes and Ms. Gones is on remotely, so we don't see her up on this monitor, but I know she's with us. This year, just a few logistical notes before we get into our substantive agenda. Most of the cows are going to start at 9:00 a.m. rather than 1:00 p.m. in previous years, just given the board's calendar. And given that shift in time, we plan to do public comment at the end of our meeting, so those wishing to speak have the benefit of hearing presentations and board discussion before making their comments, which was some feedback we heard from the public over the years. So speakers can call in to provide their comments or can provide comments in person, just like our regular board meetings. We have a packed agenda today with a few meaty presentations, so just colleagues, keep that in mind as we formulate our questions. I imagine some follow-up will be required, but it's great to see tons of the district staff here as well, in person, you know, to present on the various topics of interest. We're going to start, as always, with our school spotlight, and I'll introduce Ms. Grace Sortino in a minute, but I'm very excited to have a board district for School Nestle Avenue Elementary School presenting this morning. We'll then have a presentation on the various targeted investments in the budget the board approved in June and revisited just a few weeks ago. We'll hear how those investments align to the district strategic plan, and we'll also get a demo of our new open gov platform that will be used to track various pillars and priorities listed in the strategic plan. And then we'll hear a presentation focused on the district's new quote-unquote "products", kind of new initiatives, programs, including universal Wi-Fi, new electric buses, and micro credentialing programs. So we'll hear from various members of the team, and then we'll wrap it public comment. So with that, I don't think, I see a labor partner. I don't know if we have any who are planning to speak, so no, none have signed up, so I'll just say thank you to those of you who are joining. And we're going to get into our first section, which is budgeting for success in Nestle Avenue Charter Elementary School in Board District Four, and I'm really excited to have Principal Cheryl Grace Sortino with us, and she'll tell you more about herself and her school. Nestle, the Nestle Neurons, one of my favorite mascots in the LA Unified. Go neurons! But it's been great getting to know this school and Ms. Grace Sortino. But when I was there, I think it was the first week of school, what was so exciting to me was just how motivated Principal Grace Sortino was by the strategic plan and kind of the ideas she had, including even moving her physical office into the center of campus to be more present as the instructional leader and all that. So I'll let her take it from here and tell us about her budgeting process, but I was just so inspired, Cheryl, after visiting your school, to see how kind of what we do in this room around the strategic plan and the board goals is really implemented and executed where the magic happens, which is our schools and our classrooms. So with that, Principal Grace Sortino.
Great. Thank you so much. I think someone's going to be handling the technology for me, my presentation?
I think that's correct.
Alrighty. So yes, we are Nestle Avenue Charter Elementary. This is our budget development process. The process is sort of looking backwards, because when we did this process in March of last year, of course, or rather this year, we had no idea what the strategic plan was. So I had to take a look backwards. Can you go to the next slide? Next. I had to like, and this is just a picture, I wanted to show it because it was like rainy, like remember rain, right? It was nice to see. Next slide, please. What we do first when we're looking at our budgets is we have to first look at our SPSA, which is our school plan for student achievement. And so it's a written plan that we create to improve student achievement using federal funds. We do have some Title I money, so we have to actually document what our plans are. And if you can go to the next slide. Part of that process is to conduct a comprehensive needs assessment with our stakeholders, meaning the classified staff, the certificated staff, parents. We want to involve them in that process, and then we use the data from that, as well as the data from Dibbles and Edge Elastic, to determine what purchases we need to make for the school. Next, please. So in looking, and I had to like look backwards, as I said, and I think we made the right decisions in hindsight, even though we didn't know about the strategic plan, the goals that we used are very similar. And I understand that now, from Michael Kessler, who's over the affiliated charter program, that the strategic plan has been implemented into the LCAP. Usually, we had some other goals that we followed, but now we're going to be looking at the actual strategic plan goals. So I was looking at my kindergarten scores. At that time, and I want to be clear that the MOE scores, the MOE data, middle of the year, is all that we had in March. EOI is done sometime in May. So in looking at just those two streams of data, the boy and the MOE, I was able to figure out, sort of project, what the EOI scores would be, which is the end of the year. Can you go to the next one, please? If you notice, the pattern, usually the EOI, or the EOI scores are much better the end of the year. The blue category there, that's advanced, and benchmark is green. Yellow is below benchmark, and red is far well below benchmark. So as you can see in all those cases, our data shows that the above, the benchmark increase, above benchmark increase in all score, in all grade levels. Next, please. And that's what we want to see. Next. Next, please. And I, and this is our, this is our Edge Elastic data. As you can see, we started out below, and then by the end of the year, we were above the benchmark in all areas. You can go to the next slide. The next one. And the next one. So this is our data that we got from our stakeholders. This is a Google survey. 60%, 60.7% were certificated, 10.7% were parents, 28.6% were classified staff. Can you go to the next slide, please? And so these, this is just an example of the ones that were the highest rated. They seem to, the stakeholders seem to want a categorical program advisor. They aren't quite important at our school site, an ELA intervention coordinator and a math intervention coordinator. So even before the strategic plan, the whole school community was focused on academic excellence. Next, please. And this was the community rep, another very popular request that we spend our monies on. Technology, it wasn't that big a deal for them, it seems. Expenses for parent meetings, not so much. Purchase independent contractors or programs, not so much. Next, please. Before the strategic plan, we had to look at these goals and objectives. The 100% graduation and beyond, which is similar to pillar one, English language arts, math, English learner programs. The parent community and student engagement is now more like pillar three. Parent community and student engagement is pillar three. Attendance, suspension, school safety, and other supports are more like pillar four. Next, please. So of course, these are the pillars and priorities. Next. So I began looking at my first budget line, which was Title I, the 7S046. We received 142,140, and we used that, those funds for, to further the academic excellence, and we purchased program advisor coordinator half her time and her differential. And I want to, I want to focus on this, because I don't think a lot of people understand, when you're purchasing these positions, how much you have to factor in. The differential is for her to come a week before school and a week, and stay a week after, because technically, these are teachers. So we have to, we have to budget for every single thing. Program advisor X time, anytime I want her to work extra, I had to budget in almost 6,000 for that. Teacher X time, non-tutor, was more about intervention, teacher X time, intervention that we're going to be doing. The teacher assistants, two of them were 41,532, and we also had to pay for their benefits. And then a new, a new wrinkle in our budget plan this year was the potential funding variance, where we actually had to hold 3% of that budget aside for any increases in salaries. Our next budget was Title I, parent involvement. Right now, that fits in pillar three, engagement and collaboration, parental involvement. So our parent center needed a new desktop, so that's basically 2,000, and supplies for the parent workshops was only 95. Next, please. So the TSP study funds, program 10552, we got 171,886. We use that to further pillar one, academic excellence. We purchased an intervention coordinator. She is the ELA coordinator, half of her time. She has a 788 differential. The other part of the TSP advisor came out of this fund, the other half, 69,313, and the other part of her differential. IMA, instructional materials, we set aside money for instructional paper, ink, that sort of thing. And then we had to set aside 3% for the potential funding variance, and that was 4,000. Pillar three, the engagement and collaboration part, the community rep salary was for six hours, five days a week, was 28,190, and her benefits were 2,839. And again, the potential funding variance had to be set aside for salaries in the amount of 4,085. Next, please. So then we have our general fund. It looks like a lot of money. You're like, oh my God, 2,406. Those are staffing. That's the whole school. The teachers, my salary, the SAA, the office tech, the plant manager. So our staff pre-norm salaries were 2,264,619. We have a gate teacher. She's a teacher in the classroom, but she performs some of the functions to identify gifted students. Her differential to work extra was 1,576. We have the teacher, a third of her, of a class, 43,545. Day-to-day subs, we had to set aside money for that, 48,000. And day-to-day subs for the class size reduction teacher, 3,007,12. And to have TA relief time, 1,000. Pillar two, joy and wellness. This category also, the things that we purchased fit in two categories. I felt joy and wellness and investing in staff. The itinerant psych services, which is our PSW, we were only able to purchase one day, 6,605. Any kind of temporary personnel, we had to set aside money for that in case it happens. Clerical subs, 646. MNO supplies, 4,366. General supplies, 6,000, basically. And instructional materials, 6,300. And again, the potential funding variance for any changes in salary. Next. Now, this is our biggest, biggest fund. Because we are an affiliated charter, we get the Charter School Categorical Block Grant, and the majority of that was spent in furtherance of pillar one, academic excellence. We purchased a class size reduction teacher. We had, we purchased, this is part, the other half of the intervention coordinator, the other half of the differential. We also purchased some school supervision aids for TK. Up until this month, this past month, the TK classroom only supported one teacher. If the school wanted to purchase an aid for that classroom, you had to budget it yourself. This has changed. This past month, we were able to, the district is going to be reimbursing us, so that the aid that I purchased, this 28,191 will be coming back. I like that refund. The school supervision aid benefits were 2,839. So all of that money will be coming back to us, because the district is paying for aids for our TK program, which I'm very happy about. The IMA was 4,407. Again, potential funding variance, 3% hold for salary, 6,094. The next category, pillar one, academic excellence, and pillar two, joy and wellness. It also fit into pillar three, in my opinion, engagement and collaboration, our itinerant people service attendance. So we have a PSA, a person who comes one day a week. That's all we could afford, 27,007. She comes and she follows up on students who have chronic absences, students who are late a lot, students who haven't been to school in several days. So she actually also does home visits. So we thought that was in furtherance of attendance, which is pillar two, joy and wellness. We felt like we needed to make that investment. Next. We also got charter school allocation in lieu of EIA, 201,000, and that also fit into pillar one and pillar five, investing in staff and academic excellence. We purchased a teacher and a supervision aide, two of them actually, one and a half, supervision aide benefits, clerical OT. We also, we have a company that comes and teaches the kids how to use the computer, how to do coding, and just how to use different programs, and all of our students benefit from this person. That contract was 24,800. We have another instructional contract that comes and does robotics and coding. That was 24,800. And again, our potential funding variance, 3% hold, 3,100. Our next was under pillar four, operational effectiveness. In order to run a school, you've got to have copiers, obviously. So we have the Toshiba print service. In order to purchase the maintenance agreement, so that they can come fix the machines when they are broken, that service cost 8,890, and the image for copier service was 2,000. Pillar three, engagement and collaboration. Our advisory committee meetings were 2,000. Our Ed Leo website management. We have a website that is managed by Ed Leo. They put it together for us. We do the upkeep, but they actually planned it out and actually manage the platform. That was almost 5,000. Next. We are being offered from MED, which is our multiple language division, Russian, money for Russian TA. Unfortunately, I have not been able to find a Russian TA. I was able to find a Russian instructional aide, so I'm paying for that out of, out of this fund, I mean, out of another fund, because the offer only extends to a TA, not an instructional aide. So we do have one, but it just didn't, we weren't able to get MED to pay for it. The next one, it was a new category, it was a new budget that I was very pleased to get. It's the 11456. It was a new, an additional supplemental, where we, because we qualified, we had enough Title I students to qualify to purchase additional teachers, and that's extremely important for a school like ours, because as you may understand, parents, probably the one thing they hate the most is a split classroom. And so we were able to purchase two class size reduction teachers, and so it was irrespective of the size. The classes are small, but we were able to afford it, because we got this money. But we also purchased an instructional aide. As you can see, the CSR teachers were 222,650. The instructional aide half was 11,217, 10 days, day-to-day subs, 7,400, and our potential funding variance. I hope this particular budget continues, because it really solved a lot of our problems. After norm day, we often lose staff, because we don't have the numbers to support it, but if we're able to purchase ahead of time, like we did, in furtherance of pillar one, it's super important that we have consistent implementation of high-quality instruction, and you can't have that with a split class, in my opinion, and you certainly can't have it if you have large, large classrooms with a lot of children. We have S R money still left, 149,85. Also, we have another CR, SR teacher, class size reduction teacher, that in the, in the amount of 88,178, that we purchased supervision aids and our PSW and IMA. And those, that category fit in, that's what I like, I love about the strategic plan, is it fits a lot of categories. You know, it makes sense for academic excellence. It makes sense for joy and wellness, and it certainly makes sense for investing in staff. Next. Our S R money was 128,000. It also supported pillar one and pillar five. We bought another part of a CSR teacher, two supervision aides, half of a supervision aide and their benefits. We also purchased a teacher's assistant out of this fund and their benefits, and we had to set aside the potential funding variance. Our next category, parent engagement. The parent center workshops, we set aside money for that. That also fit under pillar one and pillar three, engagement and collaboration. The next budget was, whoops, 15659, parent engagement S R. We purchased translation equipment. A lot of our parents, our main languages at Nestle are Russian, Hebrew, and Farsi. And so we want our parents to, to be, be involved and to be included, and so we bought translation equipment, so that when they come, they can understand what's being discussed, and supplies for the parent workshops. And that's our total. It looks like a lot, 3,778,354, but it was all spent in support of the strategic plan in hindsight, and of course, going forward, we'll be able to make these decisions with the, with the strategic plan forefront, rather than in hindsight. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm sure. Thank you, Principal Grace Sortino. That was very helpful, and you know, again, I think we do these school spotlights, both to ground the board's work and school site execution implementation, because that's, that's why we're all here, but all, and so I think it's helpful as we are going to move in a few minutes to the macro 30,000-foot view to see how you're doing it on the school level, but also just your reorientation already in a few months towards the strategic plan and the alignment of your budget to those pillars. We're going to be talking about the district-wide budget to those pillars in just a few minutes. So thank you. I'm sure there are questions and some comments. I'll start with Mr. Schmelz, and then we'll go around from there.
Yes, thank you very much. I agree with you that split classes are the pits, absolutely the pits, and I know that we try to avoid that whenever possible, so I appreciate, we're on the same wavelength. I just wanted to mention that I too had bought translation equipment for my school. It was the best investment I ever made. Many times, when I needed translators, you know, they were booked at other schools, or the equipment was at other schools, so I had my own equipment. And so I didn't, I was lucky to get a translator, but I would find people at school who would help too. So that's a worthwhile investment, translation equipment. Just have to make sure you get the headsets back, right, from the kids that are playing with them, right?
Yes.
Yes. One last thing. I didn't see custodial overtime as part of your budget, and you know, when we have these wonderful events all the time, the B&amp;G workers at school barely, barely have enough time to clean the rooms, besides having to, you know, clean up after meetings and things. So what do you do for custodial overtime?
You know, it wasn't, it wasn't stated in there, but we do have it. We do have extra money. We have extra money. As a matter of fact, I'm working with, one of my, one of our synagogues in the area is going to be having services at our school using the, the auditorium.
That's great.
And so they're, they're paying, they're paying for the custodial time.
That's great. They are really limited in what they have time for, the bathrooms and the classrooms, a couple of minutes to do everything, and that's good. So I thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Schmelz. Ms. Ortiz Franklin.
Thank you so much for your presentation. It's clear that you know your school community very, very well. Quick question, what's your enrollment?
It's about 400.
Okay. I think that's helpful for the audience to understand. It's a little over $3 million for about 400 students.
Right.
And I was curious, your incoming kinder and first grade data seems stronger than a lot of schools across the district, and I heard you mention TK. I wasn't sure if you would attribute their incoming strengths to being a student in TK, or any nearby early ed centers, or working with families. Just what do you attribute the pretty strong start to your lower students?
I think there are a couple of things. Primarily, we do have a state preschool on our campus as well. So it's one class, but the teacher is excellent, so we do have, we sort of, she prepares them for TK. So I think that's one thing. Most of our students do attend preschool. I really wish preschool was mandatory, because we see a difference in the students that come, they've had, and we, and we don't just say preschool, we say academic preschool, because there are some preschools that are, you know, they play, they kind of like, which is great, but to be honest, those of us that have taught in the lower grades and the upper grades as well, but you know, kindergarten is not, not like kindergarten used to be. It is more like first grade used to be. And so I think we find a lot of our parents are surprised when they come to kindergarten, because it's so academic and they weren't prepared. And oftentimes, those are the ones that had an, that did not have an academic preschool, and they struggle a bit. We get them there, but by the end of the year, by EOI and by CFA III, they're better. But yeah, we struggle. They come in a little behind, but for the most part, our students go to preschool.
That's great. And I think just a big plug for our Universal Transition Kindergarten and all of the early ed opportunities we have in the district. So if families have young kiddos, we have space available. I promise that wasn't a setup, but I think your experience as an elementary school principal, you see when kids come in with that experience already.
Yes.
Two other questions for me. Can you explain a little bit the difference between what a categorical coordinator or program coordinator does, or program advisor? I don't know that that position is very common.
Actually, they, they changed the title. It used to be an ELD coordinator and a Title I coordinator, and then they just combined the two jobs, and now it's a program advisor. The ELD part is where we have like a huge, maybe, I don't know, maybe 100 English language learners of our 400 students. So it's up to, that person supports the English, the reclassification. Our goal is to reclassify. We do a pretty good job of it. So she makes sure that teachers get the training, they get the follow-up, they get the, any kind of PDs that we have to present, so that they can teach. We also monitor their ELD time, their core ELD. We go in classrooms to make sure that if they say they're doing an hour of ELD a day, that we see an hour of ELD. So her goal basically is to monitor the English language learner development. Also, she holds parent meetings. She's also over, she handles the ELAC, which is the English Language Advisory Council. Those parents meet, they also have input into how we spend money, and then in some of the decisions that are made at the school site. So it is a really important job. The Title I part is the writing of the SPSA, making sure that we follow on all the, there's, as you might, as you know, there's so many governmental requirements for us. She makes sure that all of those are met in a timely fashion. She attends meetings, she does reports. It's a huge job.
Thanks. I think that's helpful, because when you see that some of your survey participants had requested an intervention coordinator, and then you wonder why a program advisor, the title doesn't exactly match what they're doing, it sounds like, from your perspective. So that was really helpful. And then my last question, I'm not sure if this is for you or for the team that might be here, but I don't know if my colleagues had heard about this budget variance for teacher salaries before, and I was curious. And I was curious just what that was and how we were messaging it. It sounded like you were pretty clear that you had to hold 3% for a teacher salary variance, but I'm seeing maybe nods that others were also a little unfamiliar with this. So just curious a little bit more behind that. And I'm not sure if that might be for the CFO's team in the room? Not sure. Or Megan?
I want to see if Saman Bravo Karimini, the 3% variance that we have for teacher salaries, I don't believe it's a new thing. It's something that is set aside. It's something that has been done for a while. It's not a new incident. It's something that I think normally happens during the budget process. Thank you.
Saman said correct, in case. There you go.
Okay, so Ms. Grace Sortino, this is something you do every year.
Well, it's something that we did, but it wasn't part of, when you went to budget development, it wasn't like specified in your budget development. You had to have some room there, but we had to actually specify it and put it in the budget development and put it in the plan this time. There was more accountability for it.
Ah, okay, okay. Thanks, Ms. Riley, thanks, Saman, thanks, too. Thanks. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz Franklin. And that's helpful because I think you talked about that 3%, but also Cheryl, you talked about holding some money in case there are salary increases for school-funded positions, which is also an element that I don't think we always think about. So thank you. Ms. Goldberg? Dr. McKenna? Ms. Garcia?
Thank you so much. It's wonderful to hear you speak about your school with such confidence and knowledge. How many years have you been there?
This is my 10th year.
Great, it shows. So I just moved into your website, very nice. The first thing that hits us is student online enrollment. Can you tell us a little bit about how you focus on recruiting children or making your services available to families? And how that connects to your desire not to have displacement of faculty? You said that one T S P investment is the one that helped you reduce the combo classes. But what do you do for enrollment?
Well, since we are an affiliated charter, we have the lottery where parents can actually go on to the website, the Choices website, and actually request to be considered for the school. And then we have a lottery every year, as all affiliated charters do. And we call, we call these families in order. For example, say I have three kindergartens and I want 20, 2024 in each class. Okay, in my neighborhood, I might only have 50. Okay, so now I'm going to go to the lottery and I'm going to pull out, I'm going to call 10 people, I'm going to call 10 families and offer them a seat. They may say yes, they may say no, because parents are utilizing this system to apply in more than one school. They can. In our area, they usually apply for a lot of different schools. Sometimes they'll agree, they'll say, yes, I accept. And then in a week or so, they get a call from another nearby school and they'll change their mind. So it's a constant changing thing. It's designed to give parents a lot of autonomy and decision-making. It's hard in terms of planning for us, but we, usually we have enough in our lottery to pull from. And we also get, I think unfortunately, the Ukrainian crisis resulted in us getting a lot of Ukrainian refugees. So that wasn't really something we planned for, but we do have a lot of Ukrainian students now. So, you know, it sort of goes in cycles. Last year was, it was more Iranian. In the last few years, now it's more Russian and Ukrainian. So, you know, we get people that move into the area from other countries for the most part. There's, I don't know how they, I think they all live in this neighborhood, apparently, or they have sponsors who live in this neighborhood. So, and we're always trying to recruit. We have a lot of private schools in the area and we're always trying to recruit them as well. So oftentimes, they'll come to us, they have an I E P. The student is offered services if they enroll in an LA U S D school. Sometimes the only way that a parent can get those services is if they leave their private school and enroll in either a special day program or a resource program in a gen ed class with all of the various supports. So we do get students from private schools as well.
Thank you. And in that budget, which staff is responsible for supporting this work on enrollment and outreach? In the budget you showed us?
The community rep and I. Yeah, and even though the P T A is not on there, my P T A is awesome. They are, we meet quite frank, quite frequently. We have a P T A board and they're always, also, they have like a neighborhood chat and they're always saying really great things about the school and they're getting their friends to come to the school. So we get a lot of support from the community as well.
Wow, so your users, your customers are your best
Right.
source of marketing. So, yes. And can you share? Do you have more kids on the waiting list? Or are you able to take most of your children?
Right now, I think we're probably okay. We don't get very many fourth or fifth graders. We tend to get first, second, and maybe mostly first and second, kinder first and second. Those are the larger, that's the larger pool. So, but this year, we've been getting a lot of upper grades, which is unusual. The 10 years I've been here, that's very unusual. But we've been getting a lot of, a lot of students in grades four and five.
Very good. And so this year, our Choices application period is October 1 to November 12. How important is it for you that our families know what offerings LA Unified is providing them in the fall as opposed to the spring?
Well, I think that's huge. Obviously, we hold a lot of community meetings. We have a lot of coffee with the principals. We have the S S C, we have our E LAC, we have P T As. And so our, you know, we also, I send out connect message, connect ed. I have a bulletin for the parents. And I also send out connect ed, voice, email, and bulletin every Sunday at 5 o'clock. So we try to make sure our community is up on what's going on and we let them know what our, what the timelines are, what's coming up. And if I have to make messages during the week, we do so. So we just have to do a lot of calling. And you know, some people, if you can't get them by cellphone, you get them by the email. If you can't get them by the email, then you get them by the bulletin. If you can't get them by the, we just try every, you know, all the options that we can find to reach parents. Sometimes we resort to paper.
I love it.
Take this paper home.
I love it. Thank you very much. The last question I have is, tell me about being an affiliated charter and how does that help you with respect to the budget and the choices on serving your changing community?
Well, it was an affiliated charter when I got here. But I can tell you quite honestly, a lot of schools like mine who are in, I don't know if you'd say affluent, because we do have students that are not per se, but in where the parents' incomes are higher.
It's probably middle-class, right?
Yeah, these days.
The low need schools in LA Unified are generally middle-class.
Exactly. We didn't qualify for a lot of the supports that, like right now, there's a lot of primary promise schools. We're not a primary promise schools. We didn't have the numbers and we didn't have the income situation. So affiliated charter schools began to crop up everywhere because there was, there was money to be had. There was the charter, there was the block grant. That was the charter in lieu of. So this was an opportunity for schools like mine to get extra money for their schools. And so that was the main impetus for becoming an affiliated charter. Now, we do have some autonomy, but we also need money with that autonomy. It means autonomy is great, but you need something, you gotta fund it.
Thank you very, very much. Well done.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. I know Ms. Gonis is on virtually, and if she has any questions or comments, she can join and of course chime in. I'll just say, you know, like Ms. Ortiz Franklin said, none of, said, none of this was meant to set you up and walk into any of these, trap is the wrong, the wrong word, but these opportunities for us to highlight some of these elements of success. You were, you've been at your school for 10 years. You have a state preschool and there's a lot of early ed opportunities. And I think these are the building blocks of the real transformational schools we have in LA Unified. So as I told Ms. Grace Sortino, she's not allowed to leave as long as I'm here. So thank you. Few quick things for me. One, you know, not only do we do this as an opportunity to learn, but somewhat similar to the superintendent's, you know, data digs, we do this as an opportunity to solve problems for our schools. So I was excited, Principal Grace Sortino, that when you were talking about that Russian TA you couldn't find, so you had an instructional aid. Lydia Costa Stevens is here and she's, I think, already emailed you to say that she's going to fund that centrally and reimburse you for that. So I don't know, Lydia Costa Stevens, if, you don't need to add to that, but if you'd like to, she's just a big thumbs up from there. So just, I'm glad that you highlighted that because it was one of the things I know I noted to say, wait, if you have a body for an instructional aid but not a TA, can't we reallocate that funding to support you? So that's great and you'll be getting, getting that relief. Similarly, you mentioned that you have an itinerant P S W. Do you also have essentially funded full-time P S W?
No, we just have one day.
Just one day paid for centrally? Got it. And has, have you tried to find a five-day?
From what I understand, we took a long time to get this one that we got. I mean, apparently there's a shortage of a lot of jobs. And I didn't, didn't show the arts budget on here because I don't know why, I just don't recall why. We were supposed to get a day of theater and a day of dance. The dance is supposed to be now, but there's not enough dancers. So we're not getting dance. But we are supposed to be getting theater in January. So, you know, from what I'm hearing, and last year we had the same problem with music. So there seems to be a shortage of people in the arts division to help out at the schools, to give us the support that we need. That is why myself and my colleagues in the area generally depend on parent donations to fund a music teacher, an art teacher, a dance teacher, and all of these other things that our parents really, really, really want. Because so far, we're just not able to get them from the district. And if we do, it's one day and it's, obviously it's just for one grade level, for one semester.
Yeah, no, thanks for highlighting that. I mean, there's the funding challenge, which we're working to solve, but also the staffing challenge, which I know we've, we've discussed a lot at this, this dais on psychiatric social workers. And so, but that's why I'm grateful on the, in the Russian instructional aid context that we're able to be flexible. I just, I would love for you to have the last word, Principal Grace Sortino. And just, you know, from our vantage point, you know, what would be helpful for us to know, to make your job easier as we think about the macro budget, timelines, just any, you know, couple, you know, a couple or three things that we should have on our mind that would make your job easier?
Well, yesterday I attended a principal focus group with Dr. Baca. And we were talking about the acceleration days. Us principals, we principals are very passionate about intervention and wanting to make sure that our students that need intervention get the support to raise scores. We want high-quality instruction. I think most of us, at least in my area, we struggle with the funding for that. We have the teachers, we got that situated. But in terms of having extra money to provide interventions, whether they be after school, I did set aside some money for that. Or on a Saturday. But I think for us, just having the resources to, to provide extra instruction, to the real acceleration, I think happens, I mean, four days is great, it's better than nothing. But in terms of effectiveness, it would be great to have a consistent three weeks of instructional support intervention. Three weeks maybe in the fall, another three weeks. It's what we had when we were, I think we first came back from being virtual, at least local district Northwest did. We actually had three different times of the year that we provided intervention for our students. Those are the kinds of things that we saw a lot of growth and a lot of movement with our students.
Great, great. Well, thank you so much. Thanks to my colleagues for their great questions and the discussion. It's so helpful to, I think, start these meetings and grounded in the school site experience. So thank you, Cheryl, and look forward to visiting the Nestle neurons again soon. So thank you so much.
Thank you, take care.
Okay, great. So thank you for that. And, you know, I'm excited to see the strategic plan in action through, through the budgeting process. So speaking of that budgeting process, we're going to turn to our second presentation, Target Investments Budget and Strategic Plan Alignment. We're going to hear from Saman Bravo Karimi and the budget team as they walk us through a presentation focused on the district's targeted investments and kind of what we saw on the school site level, the budget alignment to the strategic plan. So Saman, I'll hand it to you. Let's wait to get that mic on and.
Hello, good morning. Saman Bravo Karimi, Director of Finance Policy on behalf of the Office of the Chief Financial Officer. And we are happy to be here to provide some information on some of the select targeted investments that were highlighted as part of the June and August revised budgets, as well as to demonstrate our new online budget transparency tool. This tool shows alignment between our strategic plan and the district's budget. Our first targeted investment is greening and outdoor education for $58 million. Of that 58, $50 million is to create outdoor learning spaces. This will create approximately 2,000 square feet of learning areas, things like landscaping, trees, shaded areas. And projects related to this investment will be going to the board for its approval at the December board meeting. Another $5 million for SEES, that's Sustainable Environment Enhancement Development for Schools. These projects are identified through proposals that are submitted either by the schools or by partners. And these learning spaces are integrated into the curriculum. And three projects were approved in August with two more pending approval at the September board meeting. And finally, $3 million for outdoor education. This is being delivered through Beyond the Bell as part of our Days of Discovery program. And it's using outdoor education and science to implement the next generation science standards at our schools. Next is $50 million for safety and security. And here we're highlighting a couple of those investments. $15 million to further secure our entrances. This is through the installation of things like cameras and buzzers at our school entrances at approximately 300 elementary schools. And another $3 million to aid the dispatch and record management system. Another $50 million is for bridging the technology and digital divide. This is meant to provide internet access to connect students and teachers through high-speed internet in the current school year. And these broadband installations are provided by our vendors, Spectrum and AT&amp;T. Our next targeted investment is the extended instructional days. Three of those professional development days have already been completed. There was a total expenditure of $23 million. There are still, of course, four acceleration days forthcoming. And you'll see in the table the breakdown of participation. So a total of 21,000 employees and again, for a total cost of $23 million. Next, we have dual language. The $10 million investment was the year-over-year growth in our dual-language program. This included a net increase of 76 full-time employees or full-time equivalent employees that are providing dual-language instruction. 16 sites received growth of at least two F T E for dual-language. And there are six new sites receiving dual-language as compared to last school year. We do expect some additional adjustments after norm day. Next is early education. As you know, the district expanded access to universal transitional kindergarten in 317 schools. The birthday cutoff was extended so that more four-year-olds are eligible for transitional kindergarten. And as of today, enrollment in TK is up from the end of last year by about 3,000 students. So that's really good news. What was done is the district upgraded our TK teacher assistant positions to TK instructional aid positions at our school site. So those positions were upgraded to better serve our students in our schools. 166 schools received new TK instructional aid positions. And this expansion of TK also includes four new expanded TK inclusion classrooms as well as four new California State Preschool Program classrooms in the current school year. Next, there's a $50 million for social, emotional learning, wellness, and mental health. As we mentioned back in June and again in August at the budget hearings, there was some federal legislation that was passed that is going to support investments in these areas. We are, of course, working closely with our colleagues in the Office of Government Relations to better understand the details, eligible uses for those funds. And while we still wait for more details to be released. we still wait for more details to be released, what we know so far is that these funds can be used to increase the number of mental health service providers and to train diversity counselors, social workers, et cetera. So more details to come, but this federal legislation Next, we want to show the progress we've made on our online budget transparency tool. This tool, as I mentioned earlier, demonstrates the alignment between our strategic plan and our budget. And we've coded every line of the budget to align with a pillar and a priority within the budget. Something I do want to mention is that every single line of the budget is coded to one pillar and one priority. As we know, many of the resources and staff at the district help us meet goals in many areas of the strategic plan. But in order for it to be mutually exclusive, for the numbers to add up, every line in the budget is tied to just one pillar and priority. We look forward to making this tool available to the public soon, as soon as we're done with the final kind of reviews of the coding, in concert with our programmatic colleagues. And that should be available to the public very soon. Okay, so if you look on the screen, you'll see here is the landing page. As we look at the very top, there's a blue navigation bar. You'll see the five pillars in the strategic plan are there. And as we hover the mouse, the cursor over each pillar, you'll see each priority within the pillar show up in that dropdown menu. As we scroll down on this first page, you'll see a lot of text and narrative about the strategic plan. A lot of this information is from the strategic plan itself. As you continue to scroll down, you'll see listed the five pillars that were also shown at the top navigation bar. And there are hyperlinks throughout this webpage that can lead the user, the viewer, to additional resources, information that they might be interested in learning about. So next, we're going to click on the first pillar, Academic Excellence. So as you see, you click on the, at the top bar, Academic Excellence. And just give us one moment as it loads. So here you'll see information about Pillar One, Academic Excellence. As you scroll down, you'll see the four priorities within Pillar One, with hyperlinks leading to additional information. And then as you continue to scroll down, you'll see a pie chart showing how much funding in our budget is attributable to Pillar One. And in this first pie chart, you'll see it divided between the four priorities within Pillar One. As you continue to scroll down, you'll see the same information in the table format. And then next is the next pie chart, which shows FTE by priority within Pillar One. As you continue to scroll down, you'll see the same information in the table. And then finally, a third pie chart, which shows within Pillar One, the dollars attributable to each major group category. This is a budget category that folks are probably familiar with already as it's within our budget book and other resources that we've provided. And you'll see within Pillar One how much funding is attributable to each major category within Pillar One. Also, I wanted to highlight, at the very top right-hand corner, you'll see a dropdown where you can select language. This allows the user to translate the text on the page into a number of languages for folks that need the information translated. Next, we're going to show you what one of the priority pages looks like. So at the top navigation bar, or if you click on one of the hyperlinks within the page, you'll see Priority One, High Quality Instruction, which is Priority One within Pillar One. Same as the other pages, you'll see a lot of information explaining what the priority is, what we're doing, why it's important. And then, of course, the strategies within the priority. As you scroll down, you'll see similar information as in the prior page. You'll see pie charts breaking down the financial information. And this time, it's at the priority level, and you'll see the information broken out by major group. As you continue to scroll down, you'll see it in the table, of course, and then again, divided by major group. As you see, as you hover the mouse over the pie chart, it highlights information about that sliver of the pie chart, providing information about the dollars and percentages for the major groups within this priority. Every other page is the same. You'll see every pillar and priority has been listed here with the corresponding financial information that we've highlighted today. That concludes the demonstration. We're happy to answer any questions on either the targeted investments or the budget transparency tool.
Great. Thank you. And I'm sure there are some. Does anyone... Yes, Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, thank you. I took a look at your greening and outdoor education. And it looks like you have three seeds and two more would be five. Is that all we will have is five?
No. Those are just those that have been already approved and...
What approximate number would that be?
The grand total?
Just approximate number of seeds.
There's $5 million in the budget right now. We've approved everyone that's applied for it. My goal is to run out of that money and come back to you for approval to plus it up, so we'll continue to do that.
Which is, $5 million, I'm just trying to get approximately how many schools...
It's 100, between 100,000 and 150,000 per project.
Okay, that's what I need.
150,000 if it meets the top 20% of the greening index.
Okay. And one other thing that's, I've been visiting a lot of elementary schools. What they most seem to need long run, not immediately, but long run, is trees on the playground for shade. Do we have any program to do that yet, or is that part of this $58 million? Or are we going to develop a program for that? Because since we believe that the heat in California is not going to go away, I think it's important for us to begin to have a plan that says we're going to put a certain percentage of each elementary playground with some kind of shade, some way or another. And I don't know if we have done that yet, or if that's in this $58 million.
58 won't cover all of that. We're aggressively looking at partners to try to help us. We've got memorandums of understanding with several greening groups. There are over 30 different groups that we're working with. There are state grants for stormwater runoff collection and others. We're trying to step up all of those efforts. We recognize we've got to get trees on our playgrounds.
Okay. It would be, it would be good if we could, at some point, see some kind of planning about what order we're going to do it in, or they get one tree, or they get five trees, or they get small trees, or, just so that, because every school that I've been to, and I've been to about 15 in the last three weeks, all of them say the same thing, that it's just too hot for the kids to play outside.
Our superintendents asked us to make that a priority to come up with that plan.
All right.
Ms. Goldberg, I think the superintendent would love to chime in on that quickly.
Okay.
Well, actually, Mark just said what I was about to say. We are, as we've developed the HEEDY Index, which I think, quite frankly, is a best practice, first time that such a tool was developed, scientifically based, that will allow us to prioritize the schools on basis of need. Now it's a matter of matching the funding to the priority listing of schools. We are pretty close to nearing the completion of that plan as soon as we have. And not only will we send it to the board, I think it merits public awareness of what the plan is, specific to the investment, the number of projects, and the timelines associated with it.
Okay. On your dual-language, $10 million, you said there's been a growth of existing schools, and there are six new sites. Are we now able to tell everyone in a K5 dual-language program that there's a middle school for them? Have we gotten to that point yet?
Good morning. No, not at this time. But what we are also doing is building the bridge to our world languages programs. The secondary dual-language programs, the challenge is always the staffing, because you have to have the content area credential. But if we really inform people about how strong our world language program's on, there's a natural pathway. Where it fits for K12, we're doing it.
Okay. At some point, I'd like to talk about a couple of specific places where we may be able to put a middle school dual-language, but not...
Oh, definitely, yeah. Where the community wants it, and the energy is there, we're able to do it.
Okay. Next to the last, the TK up by 3,000, that's wonderful. But it'd be good to know in what neighborhoods and areas we're getting them, so that those of us who see that they're not coming into our neighborhoods and areas can increase our recruitment. I'm thrilled by that. On the federal gun safety bill, that was one of the things that they actually got through the legislature in Washington for the first time. There's a lot of money in mental health. Does it say how it has to be used for mental health, or does it give us a lot of latitude?
We're still waiting for additional details, but we do know that it is, it can be used to increase the number of mental health service providers, as well as to train diversity councils and diversity counselors and social workers, and to increase school violence prevention programs, and programs that raise awareness for mental health for school-aged children.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. Mr. Schmelz, anything?
Yes. What did I hear you mention about, I think you said, dispatch and records management? So tell me what that is, and then I may have, I may have a question for you.
Sure. So on Slide 4, Safety/Security.
Yes.
There are system upgrades essential to school police operations and the communication center. And Sahil is here to provide additional detail if you have any questions.
My question is, where does the digitation, digitizing, I'm sorry, digitizing of cumulative records and a fair timeline for records to be picked up at schools and sent to wherever they go to be digitized? I would like to know if that's part of this program.
Good morning, board members. I'm Sir Catel, Chief Information Officer. No, this project is specifically for dispatch of the resources, police officers to the schools, tracking and management of the staffing. The system is outdated, and the budget is allocated to replace the system to integrate with our backend systems.
And it should be, and that's great. Now I'll ask the question again. When are we going to have some kind of a system where schools can actually request pickup of cumes and have them digitized? When are we going to do that so that the board member, meaning me, has to make several calls over and over and over and over again, because these cum boxes are staying in the offices for years and not picked up? So that's my question.
Good afternoon, I said good morning, right? Beronik Agarhain, Chief Strategy Officer. There is an existing system in which schools can request cumes to be picked up. What the team is being challenged with right now is picking up cumes that have not been properly signed out by the previous administration. So there is a plan right now to pick up and formalize with the assistance of the team, picking up cumes that have not been properly signed out, just so we can have them removed. We are trying to hit all the schools as best as possible in a timely manner. But there is a plan to go ahead and pick those up and remove them off of the school sites for those principals that have no longer been there, and they still have a lot of cumes. The challenge that we have right now, and it's something that we're trying to work through, is the space, and we are working with, we have a meeting scheduled to talk about a location so we could actually house all of the cumes that we're picking up. But we've started a schedule of picking up cumes whether they've been signed off or not. And it's just finding the location to bring in everything that is still pending out there. But they're on schedule. If an issue is brought up to our attention, we immediately address it. But there is a calendar, and there is a schedule. And we just encourage principals to follow the actual procedures to signing out cumes before we pick them up. But we'll pick them up before then.
And I hear that, and I appreciate your doing this, because up to your coming to being in charge of the cumes and digitization, I had a hard, hard time. When you talk about space, let's talk about some of my schools that are under comp mod, where everything's being moved around the school. Those cumes are our responsibility. They're permanent records, and I don't want them getting lost. They're in boxes that are so old that the actual boxes are falling apart. So we have to make sure we take care of it.
And we have, and we've prioritized them, and we've picked them up. As we get to become aware of it, we will, we pick them up as soon as we are aware of it, but we have everybody on a schedule. What I can do is make sure that I revisit the list and prioritize those schools that are going to be coming up to construction sooner.
Again, appreciate it. Now, you know, when principals leave the school, the new principal's afraid to sign off, because he or she doesn't know what's in those cumes, or if they're accurate or not. That's one thing. Yeah, it's a, it's a big problem. And you have offered help for sending people out to get the cumes ready to be picked up. There's a lot of work that has to be done to get a cum ready. Now, besides you, who's on your digitization team? Is there any, who's there?
We have a, we actually have about, if I'm not mistaken, about four or five individuals that our sole responsibility is to scan the cumes. When we have school experience surveys or mail applications, we have to put a pause on the cumes and actually address that, the collection and the scanning of those, because those also require, that actually has specific timeframes that we have to scan those. And then the team goes back and scans the cumes when appropriate. So, we do have a team that's dedicated. They're actually sitting in the warehouse. The team is sitting in the warehouse where the cumes are at. The heat was horrendous during this time period. But they were there, and they were scanning, and any opportunity that they can, that's their main responsibility is to scan cumes.
Is this the warehouse where the food services and everything else is? That gigantic warehouse in Pico Rivera? Is that where this is?
It's the one on Local District East's facility.
Okay.
It's on LD East, Soto Street.
Let me finish grilling you. I mean, this is my only chance to do it. So, how many machines are there to scan? Do you know offhand?
I don't know offhand. I can get that information to you. But we do, we've moved during, actually, before COVID, or when we went into COVID, we moved the machines that were in this building to that facility, so that we wouldn't pause the scanning of the cumes during COVID. And we actually were able to spread out a little bit and scan.
Okay. It is a big deal. I'm just telling you, people don't realize it. It's a big deal to have tens of, hundreds of, thousands of boxes of cumes waiting to be scanned at the school. Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
No, no, no.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Just for clarification purposes, the policy right now is, school sites are to hold six-years' worth of cumes. Reason why is, we, looking at the data, the most requested cumes come within a 10-year time period.
Right.
And families usually, it's harder for them to call a number and wait, or they may not have an email address. So the ideal place to go and get a copy of their cum is at a school site.
That's correct.
The last place they attended. So that's why the process is, they are to hold on to cumes for five years, and on the sixth year, we pick up the cumes. And so then, there's less people requesting cumes after about the sixth or seventh year, after their graduation.
I hear you. And it's not only high school.
Oh, no.
Because I have calls from elementary school where the kids have not returned, and they have cumes from 10, 15 years, and they want them out of the school, and they want them digitized.
We have to help them follow the policy.
I hear you. I hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agarhain. Thank you, Mr. Schmelz. Dr. McKenna?
Yeah. First, I want to thank Mr. Schmelz for his, shall we say, interrogation of staff members. But she can, but she can handle it. Yeah, so do I. I'm teasing. At least you don't have to go to Mar-a-Lago to pick them up. Oh, here he comes, here he comes. I'm interested in, just for awareness, not for an edict on my part, but the thought about mental awareness and the mental health and all of that. I read an article a few days ago, that some of the gang interventionists hired by the city, one of them who I happen to know, he goes by the name of Twin, and they had a big article about him. He was suffering from mental therapy, and he needed therapy, and he went to get it. And he thought, you know, in his neighborhood, and I know the neighborhood he's talking about, because he was traumatized by his work. And he's been, he's a former involved in gang person. And a lot of the people who work for the city are former gang members. That's how they get these jobs. And that's a tough way to get your credibility, to have mental health. But who prevents this, and who really knows about it? We spend a lot of money putting our climate coaches on campus, and I am somewhat aware of what their backgrounds are. And they've passed the screening, but I don't see many of them who know, and many of our councils who know about how to prevent, especially teenagers, from getting involved in gangs, particularly male-driven gangs, from which females become the sedality, if you will, after males have established that. It's not, it's not for you to answer. But I'm very concerned about, what's the way we measure the effectiveness of this, that our mental health program, and we spent the money, and we didn't want to spend it on this, or we spent it on these interventionists. And I don't really know what they do. And we've trained them to not put their hands on kids, not to break up fights. That's the way we're training them. And yet we say that's a substitute for, maybe we don't say it's a substitute. I'll take that back, because I've been told, no, they're not a substitute for school police. The presence of these people on campus are welcome, by me. But how do we measure... But how do we measure their effectiveness? How do we measure what was prevented? How do we measure many things, anything that has never happened? But we have created this solution for a problem that, in my opinion, never existed. But there is mental trauma. But I want to speak against the notion that all children of poverty, and all black children in particular, are mentally traumatized and therefore need these interventions. That's not true. That's an exaggeration, that's an assumption that they need to be looked at as traumatized and therefore overly scrutinized, et cetera, et cetera. But there are people who are sensitive to, on a school campus, how do you intervene? How do you, and only certain people can do that. It has nothing to do with your title. You can be called principal, you can be called assistant principal, you can be called, you can be called Superman with an S on your chest. It doesn't mean you're qualified to intervene with those students because you don't have the background, and you don't have the relationships with the students. That's how you really get information and how to intervene so they don't go down that dark path, including use of drugs, including things that have to do with sexual access, sexual abuse, access, and all that kind of thing. And relationships in the community that lead to retaliation. And this gentleman was, you can, it's in LA Times, you can pick it up, and it talks about how he's traumatized, his mental health, and he's got his team now trying to get some mental health awareness. But there's, they say, well, no, that's not for us. You've got to be stronger than that, you can't take, therapy is not for you. That's a, that's a cop-out. They don't see that, but he realized that after, after 25 years of this, he has, he's buried a lot of people, and I have too. And, but sometimes when I try to speak about it, it's, it's a deaf ear. In this room, there's a deaf ear to my personal experiences. It's not a book I read, it's personal experience. And when you get away from it, you realize how you were fortunate to get away from it because you don't see it every day. When you're down here, you don't see it every day. However, I'm just mentioning that when we talk about using funds for mental health and mental awareness, we need to also plug into that, who's doing it? What's their background, their real background? And what's their goal, other than just be there every day and smiling and waiting for something to happen? What do they really know about the school population, the student population? And who is vulnerable at this point? Because teenagers are not easy to reach, but when you get to reach them, it's easier when you know them and they trust you and they can confide in what is happening in the world in which they live. They may have a great home life, but their community life on the way to school may be very difficult, walking through neighborhoods where you have to watch what you're wearing and watch what you're saying. There's still people out there that haven't been converted to a, shall we say, a nonviolent lifestyle. Put it that way, a culture of nonviolence, where you never use violence at all, language, et cetera, et cetera. They've never been converted yet. And maybe it's not school's place to do that, but we do it because we know our children need help. You can teach them logarithms and algebraic functions. That's got very much little to do with staying out of trouble and staying alive in certain neighborhoods, in certain communities. So I want to put that on your minds as we talk about expenditure of funds, and we charge our principals and depend on our principals to decide how that money should be spent at their schools and what they need in their schools. It is really the principals we have to rely upon to determine what the, what the programs are that they need and what the personnel are and their needs for their schools. Because we still have things that happen among our children that traumatize them every day. But thank you for the time, Mrs. Schmelz, and I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKenna. Ms. Garcia, anything? Ms. Orsiz Franklin?
Always when it comes to budget. No, thank you very much for the presentation, team. A few specific questions, and I'm not sure if this is budget or HR team or dual language, but I noticed we opened 76 new full-time equivalents for dual language and was just curious if we have filled those 76. I'm still hearing that dual language is a hard position to fill, and that's in addition to maybe other dual language positions we already had before. So are we full?
We have a handful of vacancies, but we're working directly with the HR team to staff. Generally speaking, it's in some of our more challenging areas, and some of the vacancies are also due to some FMLA and pregnancy leaves for our Spanish vacancies. And we're working on staffing those as well.
A school came to me the other day, and we had this idea. I don't know if this is in compliance, so I just wanted to ask, if there are, for example, dual-language teachers who teach, you know, half-day in English, half-day in Spanish, would it open the pool and could we hire more teachers if one teacher taught all day in Spanish to two different groups of students, and then another person taught English so that we could get people through a little bit more? I was curious if the team had thought through that or if that's not allowed.
So there's two models, the team teaching model and the self-contained. We prefer an MMED for the instructional program to be a self-contained program versus the two-teacher teaming model, depending on the language in the school. In some situations, depending on how many bilingual authorized staff there are, they may choose the team teaching model over the self-contained. Where we have dormant bilingual Spanish-speaking teachers, generally, we're expanding the training there, and they're able to jump in because they have the bilingual authorization. A lot of it does depend on the school model chosen, and some school models are now returning to self-contained because of the translinguaging pedagogy. Little more than you asked, but just the shifts that are occurring.
Yeah, I know some of the out-of-classroom staff are filling the in-classroom vacancies, and some of them are itching to get back to their other roles, and so I think there's a little request there as well. So I'd be curious, I know Ms. Riley was working on, we get a two-week or a bi-weekly HR update. I know we were waiting for the most recent one. And it usually just has classroom teachers, but I wonder if we could also get a little breakdown of just the dual-language teachers, given that this is a big priority and a big need. And I know we'll also really need to cultivate the pipeline in some languages in particular. I know Korean, for example, is new in my district, and Japanese is new, and that's really hard to fill, particularly the Japanese, I think, has been hard to fill.
Yes, let me pass to my counterpart here.
Hello, everyone, Iliana Davalos, Chief of HR. So to answer the first thought around innovation, we have a good group of teachers that are currently not using their authorization, so we're going to really look into that to support teachers that might not be teaching in the program. So that's one thought, an immediate thought. And yes, we have, all of our classrooms are filled with the appropriately credentialed folks. And yes, definitely itching to get back, so it's the backfilling portion of it. And as promised, we will have all of that data for you. This, because it's now, Norm Day has been moved, we're still moving around all of that. So I'll have all of that for you, as well as where we have the vacancies in the dual programs, no problem.
Okay, and so Norm Day has been moved to when?
This Friday.
This coming Friday?
This Friday.
Okay.
Okay.
And I can add that just this weekend, we had the Center for Language Education, our Chinese ministry, working with us and providing the professional development. And we also worked with the Korean Educational Center of Los Angeles that works in other states. And I plan on recruiting some of those presenters.
Yay!
So we're targeting it through DL, thank you.
Great, thank you. Another question about the budget slash people, but not HR, I don't know if PC's in the room, but really excited about TK instructional aides. And the last data we got from PC had, I think, across the district, maybe 120 or so instructional aides that are vacant. And I was just curious if we know which grade levels those are in, highly in kinder or not, and maybe similarly, how we're helping to recruit those really crucial positions, particularly in the younger grades. I don't know if that's a PC or an HR. Oh, hi, Carla.
Hi, good morning. Carla Ghul, Personnel Director, Personnel Commission. And you're right, with IATK, there were about 800 new positions opened due to the program. And so we are doing multiple, finding multiple prongs to recruit. Most of them aren't elementary, to answer your question. So we're doing social media, we're doing, we're going out into the communities. We are doing radio advertisements. We are sending flyers to the schools so that the schools, you know, the schools can recruit within their community. Those are positions that are supposed to be hired within the community. And so it's best to keep the recruitment local and not so much centralized. And so that's what we're doing.
Great.
Yeah, Ms. Goldberg.
Just while we have you here. I'm hearing that one aid position requires you to be in school, but another doesn't. And they're trying to figure out, because they can't get enough of the instructional aides that have to be in school, how do they get more of the other aides, and how do they know how to do that? Because we have a lot of schools who have money for aides in the classroom that really want to get them but couldn't get any, that are in college but want the ones that are not. How is that going?
So the aides that have to be enrolled in school are the teacher assistants.
Okay.
Yeah, they're teacher assistants. The idea for them is that they are on a track to becoming a teacher, and that's why they have that college requirement. It is an ed code requirement that they continually be enrolled in school, and it makes sense for, you know, for that track. So the other aides, none of the other aides have that requirement, such as instructional aides, like the TK aides. They don't have to be enrolled in school. And so a school could decide to budget for an instructional aide versus a teacher assistant if it's hard for them to find somebody who's...
I would just urge that we send that information out to our elementary principals because a lot of them that I've talked to didn't realize that they could do something else when they couldn't get a TA.
Okay.
So maybe just to remind them, because you had the money, you wanted somebody else, another adult in that classroom with that teacher. Yes, there's a way to do it, here's how to do it.
Yes, of course.
I appreciate you raising it, Ms. Goldberg, too, because we heard it with the principal earlier in the Russian TA versus the instructional aide. And I know we're working, you know, with Dr. Murphy and our labor partners on some of this, but there does seem to be a number of instances where a school has a live body who in many ways is qualified to do the work, but technically is not. I have a school, you know, with a trained child psychologist, but they don't have the right credentialing for the, you know, maybe the PSW. And so that flexibility and trying to find ways, given the staffing shortages. So thank you for raising it, and I know Personnel Commission's working on it. Our labor partners are working on it as well, so, thanks.
Right, glad to work with the schools on those type of issues.
Yeah, and Mr. Schmelz has a quick comment on yours, and then back to...
You said the word, Norm Day. Now, I have, now the emails have started to my mailbox, blowing it up about Norm Day. So can somebody here tell us, what is Norm Day? And why do we have to have Norm Day? Because it just tears teachers out of their schools? It makes split classes all of a sudden appear? So is there anyone who can comment about Norm Day? The famous Norm Day, and why do we have to have Norm Day? Get rid of it, says my emails to me, get rid of Norm Day. Are you able to answer that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
So school budgets are developed, and the norm tables determine which positions a school will get based on a projection of enrollment, as you know, called ECAST. And then at Norm Day, typically around this time of year, once actual enrollment is in hand, the staffing levels are adjusted based on actual enrollment. So if a school has higher enrollment than what was projected during budget development a few months ago, they may receive additional positions. And if their enrollment is below what was projected, then at times they can lose positions. So the Norm Day adjustments allow the district to adjust the staffing levels based on actual enrollment, as opposed to what's used during budget development, which is a projection.
But it's only 10 students at my school, and you're going to mess up my whole school because of 10 students. Can't you do something about that? These are my emails, I'm repeating to you, okay.
Hi, this is Megan Riley. I also want to say that as we look at class sizes across the district, that Norm Day is a process by which we normalize the class size, but it's also a way then we make sure that the correct staff or that staff can be applied in schools that may not have, what Iliana spoke of earlier, vacancies or other things, credentialed employees. We have every classroom staffed. Sometimes we have them staffed with people that are placed in from other jobs that they may be working outside at headquarters or others. So it allows for the actually effective use of this. We understand, and we try to minimize disruption to the school, but it is a way of basically utilizing the staff in the most effective way to make sure that schools this year basically have permanent staff in the right jobs, and the class sizes are maintained at a level that's appropriate.
Thanks, I can just add my little personal experience. I was displaced my first year of teaching from teaching fourth grade because we didn't have the numbers, and I took over for a sixth-grade class that had had seven substitutes before I got there. And so I knew that I was more needed at the middle school than the elementary. And so we definitely hear from those who are not wanting to lose their teachers, but there are also schools that are hoping to gain those teachers. So it's definitely a collective effort here. And I have one last question, unless Dr. McKenna is on the same issue. I know he raised his hand.
Dr. McKenna, did you want to check, chime in on this issue? Okay, great.
Okay, my last question is on the OpenGov website, which is, I think, exciting. Generally, when do we expect the site to be up and running for everyone? And will it get to the level of, what are we buying, right? Because now they're categories, but will we know, is it a person, is it a product? And then the level of, is it working? You know, connecting it to that student data. I know we've been trying to kind of do both the student data and the budgeting as transparently as possible.
So we expect it to be made public in a couple weeks, once the final review of the coding and the data has been completed. And right now, the level of detail that will be provided is what we demonstrated, which shows dollars, FTE, as well as divided by major group at the pillar and priority level. So that's what will be available in this first phase when it's released to the public in a couple weeks.
And the FTE, though, will we know what positions those folks are? Or just that it's an FTE in this category?
At this time, it's just the total counts of FTEs by pillar and priority, well, within each pillar and priority.
Okay, thanks, team.
Thank you, I'll see if Ms. Gones has any questions or comments, and then go to Dr. McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. Malpoine, and thank you to the team for the presentation. It's helpful to get, I think, a little bit more details on some of these targeted investments and priorities, since I know it's been a topic of conversation that the board has had since June. Just a couple of pieces that I think would maybe be helpful for future conversations is kind of delineating where we are talking about bond-funded investments versus, you know, general fund that are coming out of our annual budget every year. It might seem like a small detail, but I think as we talk about the district's budget and the ever-evolving nature of that, as we are utilizing our COVID relief dollars, I think it's just helpful to distinguish, because we know that, for example, the bond funds can't be used for things like most salaries, instructional programming, et cetera. And I noticed that a number of the different investments that were highlighted were, I think, were likely from the bond bucket, and it would just be helpful, I think, to distinguish that in the future. And then the other piece around that, just around, you know, being clear is, you know, where are new investments versus where are we kind of bringing to fruition previous district or board-directed programs? So for example, the secure entrances, I know was something that I think the board had passed a resolution on back in, I want to say 2018, I don't remember the exact year, but it was a few years ago. I know where our schools are really excited to receive that investment, but it would just be helpful to kind of distinguish, you know, where we are meeting these previously stated priorities versus, you know, an entirely new investment that hasn't been contemplated before. And then just a couple of specific questions. Like my colleagues, I'm excited about the dual-language investment and the expansion in our dual-language programs. And Ms. Acosta Stephen, so sorry if I missed this, but just wanted to make sure I understood. So the growth in the 76 FTEs, is that like above and beyond the growth in FTEs that would be required by growing enrollment in these programs? Or is it just, you know, the number of new FTEs that were needed to meet new students enrolling in our dual-language programs? Or, you know, dual-language programs growing grades, for example?
Thank you, Ms. Gones. It's a bit of both. As we add grade levels, we generally start in kindergarten. So if we're at a school where we're up to third grade and we add fourth grade, that increases the staffing need. We've also grown about approximately 1,000 students in our dual-language program in addition to the programs that we're opening. So it's a combination of all three in terms of the FTEs.
That's helpful, and I appreciate what you highlighted around, you know, more, more challenging, less common languages. I know in my district, there's still been a few challenges with Armenian language vacancies. And I know HR and med is helping a lot with trying to build those pipelines. So just wanted to, appreciation.
Thank you, we're working with Kittredge directly with some key teachers there and going to start a Saturday group and a recruitment effort for Armenian teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. And then just the last piece on dual-language, not for right now, but maybe in the future. Sorry, I see you were walking away.
No, I'm sorry, I should have...
Was just, you know, I think in the future, what might be helpful is, you know, a few years ago, the board passed a resolution around biliteracy for all students and envisioned a world in which all of our students would be achieving biliteracy by a certain end date. And it would just be helpful to know... And it would just be helpful to know, you know, how is our expansion and these budget investments that we're highlighting today? How does that map onto the goals that were outlined towards getting to bilinguism for all?
So with Global 2030, California Global 2030, and what you'll be seeing in terms of new products, our multicultural academic decathlon, which will be Imagine Model United Nations and the Academic Decathlon Meeting, and the increase in students receiving awards, awards that we've created in our district, K1, 5, 6, and 8th grade, those pathway awards. And the students who are receiving the Seals of Bilinguism and how it supports English learners as well, were well on that pathway. Currently, we have one in four graduating students receiving a Seal of Bilinguism. Our plan is to have two in four. And hopefully, before I leave you in four to six years, it will be three out of four students who will be available to potentially take Superintendent Carvalho's job in about 10 years because they will be multilingual and speak as many languages as he does. So that's our goal, to prepare people to take all of your seats and be multilingual. So that's our succession plan. There you go.
I love it.
Okay, you're welcome.
Don't have relief, but thank you. That's helpful, helpful information. And certainly have seen the growth in the Seals of Bilinguism in my district. So appreciate all of your work.
Thank you all for your support.
I was also wondering, on the gun safety bill, I know that we are still looking into sort of what specific investments. Do we have a sense of timeline of when, you know, we would know both the dollar amounts that we could be eligible for, the process by which we would, you know, is it a competitive grant process or formula grant? And then just when we might receive those dollars?
We don't have the specifics yet on timeline, other than what I shared about the potential eligible uses. But as soon as we have those, we will provide them.
Great. Thank you. And then on early education, I am also excited, you know, by the growth in programs and growth in students. I think that 3,000 is good. I think that the estimates from master planning and demographics would have shown us that a higher number potentially. So just as we look throughout this year and to next school year, to continuing to reach to UTK, all four-year-olds in a TK program, it would just be helpful to know kind of what are the plans to ensure that all eligible students and families know about this new program and have the opportunity to easily enroll in local programs at their neighborhood schools.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Gones. Dr. McKenna, we'll go back to you.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to talk about Norm Date. And only an ex-principal would talk about Norm Date. And I know why. Let me explain why Norm Date is where it is. And some of, maybe nobody here remembers this. There was a time when Norm Date was not really a mandate. However, there were some incidents that occurred in the 70s where at secondary schools, a couple of them, maybe more than a couple, where they were over-enrolled on paper but under-enrolled in actuals, shall we say, butts in the seat. And therefore, the budget was out of whack. And the number of students that were purported to be in the school were overestimated. And if each one, if so many had a teacher attached to it, one of the schools was a high school, large high school, had over a million dollars over-budgeted and over-teached, and didn't have the students to generate the ADA. Now, we are a public institution that is auditable and held accountable because we're public. We can't go in our pockets and say, okay, we'll put that in there and that'll balance the books. We're not a bank. We have to be accountable to the taxpayer and to our own guidelines. So Norm Date was a creation of coming up with a date and was a fifth, the fourth or fifth Friday of the opening of school by which the principals had to balance their staffs. Now, I've heard my colleagues say, well, I only have 10 students over. Should I have to get rid of a teacher for 10 students? And I have found it to be at least appealable at the level of the superintendent or local district superintendent. And for the most part, they've been pretty reasonable. When you say, look, I'm only five or six kids short. It really costs me a teacher and I have to redo my whole matrix, my whole master schedule for that. And they would say, okay, okay. And other places, they would be over-enrolled and have more students there than they really needed. They needed another teacher, so they wanted another teacher. And maybe they wouldn't get one. It sort of balanced out at the end of the year. It was called the cost of doing business. Without some system of accountability, we would run into that situation where students, are they really enrolled? We even created a term called inactivity. And an inactive student had to be defined. What is an inactive student? It's a student who was on the roll at some point in the beginning of school year but hasn't been heard from for five days or more. And we can't find them, can't locate them. We have to strike them from the roll. And that can go on through the rest of the year. But some of those students would have been carried if they don't do it right. Now, I have been, I've had more of those positions than most anybody. I have been a registrar, but it was a position where you ran the attendance office and you had to do all of that, do statistical reports every month. You had to be right on the button or you were out of place. A dean did the same thing. A boys' vice principal and assistant principal and a principal, always responsible for the outcome. And so I know about the possibilities of inaccurate information leading to over-budgeting of personnel and not being able to support it with students' ADA. There was a time when students generated ADA by having an excuse, bringing a written note from their parent. Now, we don't ask for that anymore. My feeling is that attendance is not the way to measure ADA. It ought to be enrollment. Because once they enroll, if they're still there and they're absent, we still have to take care of them. That's why we have PSA workers and all of that. So we still have this need for services provided for the enrolled child, if the child is really enrolled. And so it is a nuisance, but it may be a necessary nuisance. It's only a nuisance if we don't handle it right. If a principal at a school, elementary through high school, large or small, is going to suffer the loss of a position because they're within a certain range. Now, what is that range? I don't know. It's a flexibility that you say, what is that school like? What would they suffer if that school lost? And you can't say, this school is like that school. So five students is the limit. If you go past five schools, five students, rather, you lose a position. That's too inflexible. You have to decide, what type of school is this? What position are they losing? And how will that hurt the school and the children? Not just the principal's feelings. You know, everybody's feelings are important. But most important is student productivity and resources allocated to students. So I'm not telling you what we ought to keep Norm Date or lose Norm Date. And I heard what you said, and I know why you said it. And I've been in that position before. What the hell is Norm Date? And therefore, you can't say we don't need it because we can't reach that standard that we have of, you know, a budgetary allocation. I have written a proposal. I've re-submitted it to the superintendent. It never got to the resolution stage because it said it was too detailed. And it talks about budgeting for student achievement, not budgeting for balancing a budget. So every school, you know, if you have 30 students to one teacher, but if half that class is at single-digit proficiency, do they still need 30 students in that one class? Maybe that class of all those underperforming students, maybe they need 10 to one. And if they move up a little bit, maybe they need 15 to one. Because the teacher is still at a loss for how do you gain growth? And now you're in the fifth grade. It's not just the first grade, you're in the fifth grade now. And the student is still at single-digit proficiency in the three basic areas, reading, writing, and arithmetic. It's really, you know, language, languages, writing and reading, and then mathematics. And that's what we test on. And that's how you determine whether or not you are proficient or not. We don't test for mental awareness. We don't test for mental health. We don't test in other subjects. We don't test for physical education in terms of that. So physical education classes will go all the way up to 50 in a class. And that was okay because they're out on the yard and the teacher would handle them. And then, you know, the Physical Education Union said, no, you can't put them in ROTC. They have to have PE credentials. So then we started losing ROTC because every ROTC teacher did not have a PE credential. And every PE teacher couldn't teach ROTC. But it was a way of getting more teachers into the system who pay dues. I got that. So this thing about balancing a budget, are we really balancing the budget on the backs of, shall we say, dollars? Or budget, balancing the budget on the back of student achievement? And it's not easy to do because you say, well, how do we increase student achievement? Even when you lower class size, you have no guarantee that that's going to improve student achievement. And by how many must you? It really depends upon the quality of the teacher. Now, that's a hard thing to measure, too, because everybody's got a credential. Everybody gets paid a salary. Is everybody effective where they are? Everybody who's got a credential can't teach everywhere. You know, we can say all teachers are equal. Not really. Our credentials may be equal, but that doesn't mean we're in the right place for the right job. So I agree with my colleague. It's a frustration. What the answer to it is, I don't know. I think if we can have that ability to appeal to the superintendent when we get close and say, I'm going to lose a teacher. Well, depends on where the school is. Maybe you can't lose that teacher. Maybe that's so disastrous that you don't have enough flexibility in that school. It's so small anyway, and you only have so many faculty members. If you only have, you know, 20 faculty members and you can lose one, you know, you're losing one-tenth of your faculty. And so, or you lose two, rather, you lose one-tenth. Yeah. So if you lose two, you're going to lose one-tenth. And some schools don't even have 20. They have like 15 teachers. So it's a tough thing to say. But that's just my reminiscence and some old-school stuff that maybe some of us never knew and forgotten, how we got there to something called Norm Date. But hopefully, we can be stable so that we can keep the staff we have. And one more thing, there was always this attempt at mid-year to say, we want to renorm. Well, that was a dirty word because we said, well, how are we going to renorm? So we start picking up, we start figuring out, I can't renorm. Where am I going to, we're going to get rid of these people. We couldn't do it. We couldn't, the school would fall apart if we renorm. Now, most of the time, there was less enrollment in the second semester than in the first semester. And sometimes you say, well, we've got five teachers we should get rid of. Well, we couldn't do it because the whole master schedule would be torn apart. And therefore, you had to get rid of some classes. So we stopped even trying to do that, this thing called re-norming. It was a nice word, but it was more than a four-letter word.
It was a curse word.
It was a curse word, yeah, it really was. So anyway, that's just some antiquated history that still affects us today. And still, my colleague still feels it because he was in it. So was I. And if you're the principal of a school, you feel it more than anybody else because you don't want to have to tell your faculty members, your job is gone. And some of you were faculty with teachers, and when the norm was gone, you lost your jobs. And that's called a riff, a riff, yeah, reduction in force, right. Thank you, I just want to say that.
Yeah, no, thank you, Dr. McKenna. I think it's antiquated, maybe, but not anachronistic in that we're still dealing with it and the history is important. And I think you have some cosignatories here for the targeted and strategic class size reduction. I know Ms. Goldberg's talked about that a lot. We also, you know, we're cosponsors of SBA 30, which would have been enrollment funding and is stalled in the Assembly Education Committee. So hopefully, we can, you know, those who are paying attention can help us work with our legislators to get that passed. And then when there have been attempts, whether we call it student-based budgeting or what have you, to change, maybe move away from a norm-based table, that comes with its own concerns. So definitely, you know, relevant and important. A few, just a few things for me on the presentation. One, you know, it's great to see at the school level, the alignment to the pillars, and then at the district level with this website. So thank you for that and excited that it will go live in a few weeks. And, you know, I just, I hope there's alignment with our open data platform, which has been operative for about five years because there's a lot of great information there for the public, both for the more esoteric research, but also just for parents and community members. And so harmonizing these two will be important. So thank you for that. You know, I just want to co-sign two areas that my colleagues really hit on well, I think. One is dual-language. And we heard it from a few board members. But, you know, I think the resolution that I had brought and then pulled when the superintendent initiated this investment in dual-language was not only to work on expansion, but really support for existing programs that I'm worried may die on the vine. And so in addition, you know, Ms. Gones asked the question, well, how much of this is just, you get, if you start in kindergarten and then you go to first grade, you're naturally going to get that norm-based funding? What I'm really interested in is how are we supporting existing programs that where parents are frustrated, where teachers are frustrated? Some of that is maybe thinking about strategic class sizes for dual-immersion programs. I have some programs that have split classes. And maybe we should think differently, given the challenges of larger class sizes and split classes, particularly for dual-immersion programs. We do have a lot of vacancies, I'll say, relatively, but in foreign language. We hear from some school sites that actually they prefer the team-teaching model. And so I'm curious, you know, why. And again, maybe not for this forum, but, you know, why we would think about the self-contained if the schools really want the team-teaching model and then that recruitment. So I just want to reiterate, you know, Superintendent, in addition to the expansion, which is, I think, supported by this board, rethinking the existing programs and supporting them. And so one, you know, just while we have you there, Ms. Acosta-Stevens, one question is in the growth, the net gain of 76 FTEs, does that include teachers and TA? Like, what's the breakdown of who those people are?
That is only teachers.
That's only teachers.
Yes, we do some additional funding for languages like Russian, Mandarin, Korean, out of my office for that TA/other position we're talking about. But that is only for teachers.
Got it. Because I think, yeah, you know, the things we hear, at least from the programs in my district, are the need for, one around recruitment. And I know the superintendent has initiated, as you have too, working with the consulates. But how do we recruit? Can we work with the State Department on visa issues for those teachers that are having difficulty coming here? Can we waive some of the credentialing requirements or expedite them if they're credentialed maybe in their home country but not here? Can we look at TAs? And again, I think some of that's strategic investment. So I'm, there are a few schools that we can talk offline about in my district that could use support, not just with the expansion, but we will not be in a position to expand if the program crumbles because we're not investing and understanding the nuances and differentiated supports that those schools need, so.
Agreed. And some of the work that began many years ago and that Ms. Davalos is also leading is around that TA piece. That's why we opened up the Step Up program, the multilingual program. But we're becoming more focused and more targeted on those pieces. I'm not sure if Ms. Davalos or Mr. Serrato are here. I do know the work in terms of leading it in the past recruitment, but it does need to be more targeted, as you said. And we are meeting and strategizing on those pieces.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Exactly, the Step Up program is the program that we have for our paraprofessionals to go into these different programs. Additionally, I want to remind us that in the district intern program, we do have the added authorization for teachers to be able to gain the authorization to teach in bilingual classrooms. So we're also encouraging teachers to go there as well. And we do have history in the past. When I started in this district, I came in as a bilingual teacher and many of my colleagues were from Spain and Mexico that we brought in in those days. So there is history around that, Mr. Melvoine, that we can certainly follow up on. At this point, I think our greatest assets are our current employees. At this point, I think our greatest assets are our current employees. We have many, many paraprofessionals that speak the appropriate language. So encouraging them to be in college and bringing them on board is very, very important. So we continue to do those efforts. But I agree with you, we have to definitely dust off some of those strategies that we did back in the day when we were all hired to be bilingual teachers.
Great. And I would just say, let, I mean, I think, I don't think, I know you have a board that's very supportive of this work, so as the extent that we can be helpful when it comes to the advocacy, let us know. But, you know, I know I've mentioned this before, but there are, I hear consistently from families who are permitting into LUSD from, in my district, Culver City, Santa Monica, Beverly Hills. When we opened the Richland Program in French, people coming from private school, from the Lycée Français, to LA Unified. And so when we talk about our enrollment challenges, these are programs that are growth-based, and yet, we're at this, I think, real inflection point where if we don't invest in them and they, you know, there's rotating parade of subs or the splits, we're going to lose those families. And that strategy, which is attracting families, you know, not from one district school to another, but from other districts, from private schools, you know, we'll lose that value at. Mr. Schmelzer, I think, has a quick question.
You mentioned paraprofessionals, and you mentioned teachers. Now, do you mean teachers or do you mean certificated people like counselors also?
Classroom teachers.
Classroom teachers.
Specifically, classroom teachers.
Okay.
Yes. And for the piece on recruitment, just this Saturday, again, the Chinese Ministry and our Korean group, because we're working with them on professional development, we're doing direct outreach with them, and then we connect them to a Lianna's team in terms of any visa pieces and recruiting.
Great.
Well, it would sure be nice to have bilingual counselors also kind of recruited in some kind of way with a stipend, I guess, to make sure, like we used to do a long time ago, you know, to have a.
Agreed, I had one.
Okay. I was one. Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, and I'll just, you know, an early ed, exciting momentum. I'll reiterate, I think, what Ms. Gónez and others said, which is 3,000 students is great, but demographically, I think we should be a lot higher. And looking at individual schools, including Nessel, twice as many five-year-olds as four-year-olds. And so how we're thinking about, well, those five-year-olds were four, and so why aren't they in our school program? So how are we working on our recruitment really around early ed? I think when we see the new org chart from the superintendent, I know in the past ETK has been under early ed, TK under K-12, and how do we set ourselves up for success? I will say, and we heard it from Principal Gray Sortino, the district funding that TK Instructional Aid is really helpful and alleviates some of the school site budget. So exciting momentum there. I'll note, it's almost 11:00 and we have this next presentation, but I see Mr. Schmelzer.
Just one question for Samir and team. Any opportunity for the public to take a look at what we've talked about today, the online budget transparency tool? Any chance that the public had a chance to look at this and what's their opinion or can they look at it?
It will be made public soon, once the final kind of reviews are completed in about a couple of weeks.
Okay, so I'd like to hear what they have to say, too. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Great. Superintendent?
Just want to, so I've been listening quite attentively, particularly to the conversation, obviously, about the issue of ramping up dual-language programs and the human resource that's needed to do so, not only to propagate the subsequent grade levels, right, once you begin a program, but also to, and that's called vertical expansion, but also horizontal expansion, meaning more schools impacting more students across the district. And for us, this is not an either-or, it's a both-end proposition. Secondly, on the issue of Norm Day, and I had to do, I began listening to Norm Day before I arrived here, and I can tell you that I understand the merit and the need. Obviously, if you do not have a reconciliation of enrollment per school to budget and allocated positions, you invite a red line position, you invite bankruptcy. So you need that examination. Where I think we need to do better, and there's work in progress in this regard, is that it is unfair to a principal, to teachers, to students and parents to wait until about a month into the school year to recognize the need for that reconciliation. There are better tried processes that don't just embrace this concept that you start the year with a full budget you had last year without accounting for enrollment shifts from the previous year to this year, or even a multi-year trend. A lot of districts across the country do that. So what does that mean? That means that throughout the summer, there is an ongoing dialogue, two to three interactions with principals that address specifically that. What is the enrollment trend? What does that mean in terms of current positions? So at least teachers have principals, teachers, and parents. Well, principals and teachers have a better understanding upfront in terms of what they usually learn one month into the school year. For the benefit of students and parents is that there is no disruption. If, in fact, the master schedules are more a reflection of reality based on trend than a reality that's fully learned and reacted upon six, five, six weeks into the school year. We're going to look at that really, really hard. I know that this will require some degree of shift, and one of those shifts is that it does require some degree of work over the summer, specific to schools. And I know that's an issue we need to work through. But most districts do not budget like this. Most districts do not put the community through an upheaval in terms of a month in or six weeks in, now adjusting for the movement of teachers. That's quite frankly, highly inconvenient. It is not community-centric, it's not student-centric, it's not teacher-centric. So there's a better way, and we are working on that.
Thank you. What a great note to end on, there is a better way, and we are working on it. A lot of follow-ups, I know a few, but we'll work with the CFO's office on that, you know, plan for shading school campuses with trees, the number of scanners Mr. Schmelzer used for cumulative records, breakdown of vacant dual-language teachers in the HR report, the clarification of TAs versus instructional aides, and how schools can hire. So we'll follow up there. But thank you all for that helpful overview of that strategic plan alignment and some of those targeted investments. We're going to move on to more targeted investments, but which are the new product highlights. We've been hearing, we, the board, the public, our school communities, for a few months now, about these exciting initiatives in different buckets that align to the strategic plan, and the superintendent's team is going to walk us through a presentation and dive a little deeper into a number of these. So I don't know exactly who kicking this off because I think we're passing it on, so I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to very, very briefly introduce our new products presentation. It's slightly different than the order, slightly different from what you saw originally. And that's just for the purpose of continuity and seamless transition between these different products and initiatives. What you will see is basically a collection of 49 new products, offering services, programs, all focused and aligned to the strategic plan and within the budget as it exists. Some of these were reflected and mentioned during the 100-day period. Some of these are specifically outlined in the still recently approved strategic plan. Some of these are already being acted upon, implemented, others are in the process of design and for future implementation. There are, there is specific alignment between each one of these initiatives or products and each one of the five pillars. In fact, 11 fall within the pillar of academic excellence, 14 within the pillar of joy and wellness, seven within engagement and collaboration, 12 under operational effectiveness, and five under investments or investing in staff. So with that said, I'll turn the presentation to Pedro Garcia to present slides on behalf of the Division of Instruction, and we'll go from there.
Good morning, Superintendent Carvalho, esteemed board members. It's my pleasure to begin the presentation this morning on our new products. So this is an exciting effort collectively across divisions, offices, to share updates briefly on what these new products involve as they align, as the superintendent mentioned to our strategic plan. So our first slide, I'll kick off with the expansion of the early ed programs in our district. As you can see on the slide here, lots of information, but I wanted to highlight, the real reason behind this is to expand opportunities for our youngest learners to provide access to these programs, to prepare them for the social, emotional aspect of schooling, to prepare them as they transition into kindergarten, increase kindergarten readiness around math, language, and literacy, and support them, as we know it's so important to have a first step into our system, and get them as much exposure to schooling at their earliest age possible. So as we mentioned in the previous presentation, there is an effort here to continue the expansion with increased communication to our community and advertisement of such programs. Next slide, please. Our National Ed Equity Lab is an exciting opportunity. This is a program that's already begun, launched in this semester for nine schools in our district. These nine schools and students, 225 of those approximately, are taking courses right now at esteemed universities, earning college credit. Some of these universities are offering courses around computer science, geography, those type of courses that bear credit for them. And some of the universities involved are Georgetown, Columbia, schools of that stature, and we are excited to look at this opportunity and expand. We know that this is a model or an example of accelerating students' progress as they achieve not only graduation, but also get a head start on their college education as well. Next slide. The College Journal of Schoolology Companion is another resource we are launching to provide support to our juniors and seniors. In addition to the supports provided to them, we also want to highlight there are additional resources in place, given our current structure at schools, to enhance and expose the community to the resources that not only deem students eligible for college, but actually get them to enroll. We know one of our challenges is to get students eligible, but the second part of that is to make sure they actually enroll. These are more resources for the community, parents and families, to let them know they are supported on that journey. Next slide, please. Career Labs for Middle Schools. This is an exciting opportunity, already begun. We have 22 middle schools already participating in the program. The Paxton Patterson Labs in place are being supported by our CTE office. What's exciting about this is it's an opportunity for students to get hands-on exposure to career and community sector type of employment opportunities. For a middle school student, this is important because as they select high schools that have particular career pathways, it allows them this exposure to see what their interests are. In addition to the core curriculum, this can be offered as an elective course as they journey into high school. Next slide, thank you. The New Career Pathways, again, more information that we wanted to convey to our community. There are many industry sectors, 15 industry sectors that we support through our CTE office. This is providing additional information around these programs, looking at how students, again, can take advantage. They are, again, aligned to our efforts in high school level, just to provide more opportunity, again, around these particular pathways. I'll just highlight three of them, the arts, media, and entertainment, that's so purposely, you know, available in our community in Los Angeles. The CTE guys, something we want to put in front of our students, particularly, again, seventh and eighth-grade families as they're making choices for high school, to make sure that they have as much information about these opportunities. Again, these programs that we offer are really embedded with project-based learning, internships, things of that nature, again, exposure at the earliest level possible. And in this regard, middle school into high school transition is so important for our families to know what's available to them as they make these decisions. Looking at our annual multilingual academic decathlon, this is an opportunity for our students who are participating in dual-language programs, especially world language courses, to have an opportunity to showcase their assets as language learners in a multilingual perspective. This is an opportunity for our students to showcase in an academic decathlon. The visual here is to have the students perform and demonstrate their learning in their language of, their current language that they are acquiring through these offered courses. So again, similar to the academic decathlon, but through the lens of worldwide and world The International Newcomer Academy, this is an expansion of the newcomer program, excuse me, international newcomer program. This is important, an opportunity to provide the supports for our students who are international newcomers that come to us trying to acquire language proficiency, but we also focus on the assets that they bring and also the support services needed to make sure that they are doing well in school. So again, a coordinated effort to expand two more campuses in addition to the current international newcomer school at Belmont. The Adult Education Virtual Academy, this is an opportunity for students in the adult ed program to take courses despite their geographic location. This is an effort to meet the needs of those students who have challenges of, say, being parents or have difficult work schedules, they caretake for others. So this is an opportunity to provide them a self-paced program for which they can continue their education moving forward. So we feel like this is just the launch, again, already underway this month, but again, another opportunity to meet students where they might, you know, have the most need. Vocational and apprenticeship preparation programs, this is an effort to expand. The two areas I want to highlight here are our LVM programs, Licensed Vocational Nurse, and also the MC3. This is in a way to get pre-apprenticeship type of opportunities in place to, again, align our students with possible workforce opportunities, say, in the construction field or other areas of that nature. So again, trying to get our students and investors in our community to make sure our students are working toward a path that will not only provide an education, but also an opportunity of employment. So with that, I think I'm handing it over to our Chief Strategy Officer, Veronica Reguén.
Thank you, Pedro. So the purpose of the Data Champion Initiative is to support the superintendent's 100 priority schools with the implementation of data-driven decision-making strategies that furnish desired outcomes related to the student achievement highlighted during the data dialogues informing growth meetings that the superintendent held and will hold four times this year. Data Champions will be trained to leverage existing data systems such as Whole Child to orchestrate their school's success. The role is to model data leadership by supporting their school's principal in developing and implementing data strategies that create coherence and synergy that fuels data-driven dialogue and instruction. These champions will, these data champions will join some of our existing data champions that started a pilot last year that includes some of our national board certified teachers, some BSAP teachers that are currently, or representatives are participating. We also have some TSP and Title I coordinators and APEISs that are participating in these dialogues. And I hand it off to Tony Aguilar, our chief.
I'm going to like for you. Good morning, Chief of Special Education, Equity, and Access. Thank you, Veronica. So I'll go over a couple of slides for you, so I'll have the luxury of being up here, I believe, for nine slides. In the area of telehealth in schools, we have an opportunity to provide health access and equity for children, partnering with Children's Hospital, Los Angeles, to identify schools in a pilot program with the highest rates of chronic absenteeism and the highest rates of chronic disease. This program can provide telehealth visits with Children's Hospital doctors in the varieties of specialties without kids having to miss an entire day of school, which we recognize the value and importance of having schools, of students in our schools every single day. Next slide. Moving on to a mental health career pathway, while one pandemic may be waning, a new one is emerging with mental health. Through our partnership with Career Technical Education, we are not only aligning career development programs with community needs, we are increasing professional capacity to address the mental health of our youth in all communities, leading to an increase of opportunities to success. Next slide. With our I Attend campaign, attendance is everyone's responsibility. I Attend is an integrated and comprehensive approach to improving attendance for all students in all schools. Schools use a multi-tiered systems of approach, including the universal strategy of promoting attendance, ongoing culture, target contacts with students not meeting attendance goals, intensive support to remove barriers of those who are chronically absent. Next slide. In our wellness and nutrition pathway, we are expanding career opportunities in high-demand technical careers while addressing shortages of professionals in our communities, focused on teaching healthy lifestyles. This is a collaborative approach with CTE and Link, with CTE Link Learning. Students will be trained to provide nutrition lessons to students at elementary schools over an eight-week course during the spring semester. Next slide. Our Many Mansion partnerships. In collaboration with facilities and the nonprofit Many Mansions, LUSD families will receive priority treatment in securing federally subsidized housing. By removing these serious barriers of housing and the insecurity, the efforts to have our students navigate the road and gain that academic success. Next slide. Expanding access to laundry service, oftentimes easy to overlook, access to laundry is something that many of us take for granted. Mobile laundry services help remove the barriers for our students experiencing homelessness by providing access to clean clothing, bedding, and more to support their emotional, socio-emotional wellness. This will be a mobile laundry service that will provide same-day washing, drying, and folding. Make a Choice campaign. Make a Choice campaign empowers our educators to bring weekly lessons on how to address and take action on making smart choices in school and in life. Weekly lessons will be on a range of topics, including mental health and sexual harassment. Next slide. Proud to Be. This will train facilitators to provide sessions for any students experiencing distress over sexual and gender. over sexual and gender identity, using a curriculum that promotes self-advocacy, identity integration, and help-seeking behaviors. Being who we are should be a positive experience, not a stigma. And Chalk It Up to Joy. This campaign will provide outlets for creativity and expression for students. Campuses will be transformed to reflect the positive and social well-being of the culture of our schools. Schools will be provided with sidewalk chalk and supporting materials to guide students through this activity. Thank you very much.
Hi, folks. My name is Jason Horowitz. I'm a regional manager with Food Services. Studies show participating in the school meal program improves academic performance. Food Services is elevating school nutrition in many ways. We've increased students' daily options and added student-approved, fresh, healthy choices like our Kung Pao Chicken Bowls with broccoli and blueberry smoothies. Our new digital menu app, Yum Yummy, launched in August and has already been downloaded to over eighteen thousand devices. It gives families a convenient way to view our menu, review the nutritional content, and check for allergens. Students want a dining area that's clean and inviting. We've initiated several upgrade projects at the schools that are listed. The first three have installed big-screen TVs and a mural incorporating the school logo to provide a hangout spot with student-chosen, school-approved music and videos. The other sites are getting a facelift to make the dining space vibrant with bright colors, appetizing graphics, and their school logo to instill a sense of pride and school spirit. Food trucks will be coming to LA Unified to provide a unique dining experience. Principals will be able to reserve a street taco truck or burger bar truck for a specific date at no cost to the school. All student meals served will be reimbursable. Plan to have those rolling out by March of 2023.
Next slide is the All Kids Bike for Kinder and Middle Schoolers. This is a campaign already begun. This is an opportunity for schools, students, to provide bicycles to our children, to get them more actively involved, increase physical activity, and a great way then, for them to just enhance their coordination, I really believe, is something that we can't overlook. So, this is a program that will extend through the duration of the school year, and we're excited to offer this, again, to our elementary and middle schools.
Mark Hovater, Chief Facility Executive, we discussed earlier the importance and the benefit of greening all of our campuses. And while we're going to accelerate preparing our master plan to do all of the campuses, we have to have a mechanism that's going to help guide us as to what we're going to do first. We're going to use our greening index, which is essentially a scoring of every one of our schools. It's available now, it's already out, that you can look up and see where your school has scored. It's a combination of the percentage of green that's on a campus and the available parks in that immediate area. We have actually already applied this last month when we brought our first seeds project that got the additional fifty thousand dollars. That was for Manchester Elementary School, and we'll continue to apply that in other aspects, such as our new program that we've created under Measure RR. It's the outdoor learning space. Part of the greening area, we will look at the top ten percent in our greening index, and for those schools that have bungalows that are available to be removed, we're going to remove them and replace them with an outdoor learning area. It's going to impact twenty schools. First project's coming up at the end of this year, and we hope to get all of them identified in the next year as we move forward. It's going to create an outdoor learning environment, greening, sustainable spaces. It's going to have Wi-Fi. It's actually going to be an instructional classroom. There's going to be Wi-Fi. There's going to be a sink that's available to be able to carry out those programs.
Good morning, board members. Superintendent Carvalho, my name is Alfonso Webb, Senior Director for the Division of School Culture, Climate, and Safety. And I'd like to share with you probably one of the most innovative strategies around safety measures that we're implementing within the district. It is entitled the Emergency, oh, excuse me, the Emergency Alert Application. And within this app, it represents the collaborative efforts among school police, the Division of School Culture, Climate, and Safety, as well as the Office of General Counsel. This app provides increased safety measures for students and employees as it provides an immediate alert sent to the LASPD, site administrators, and other divisions through system messages, texts, and phone calls. Employees will have access to signal the alert within the school's firewalls. Within this alert, more importantly, the emergency alert reduces, it significantly reduces the time that it takes to get through to 911 for an active assailant emergency.
Good morning, committee members. Mr. Superintendent, my name is Douglas Lee, Senior Administrator in ITD. And I'm here to, the new product I'm talking about is Universal Wi-Fi, All Families Connected. The reason we're doing this is simple, to enable students' access to instructional content while at home, bridging the digital divide by providing high-speed internet connectivity. In March of 2021, the board, yourselves, unanimously passed a resolution to close the digital divide and improve distance and hybrid learning. The board also authorized fifty million to this program through December 2023. I just want to note that to sustain this program, additional funding will be needed to go on past that date. In August 2021, we launched a website, device.lausd.net, and also a hotline for families to call in or go on a website to register their internet needs. We also launched a massive outreach communication campaign with billboards, as you probably see throughout the city, on buses, on bus benches, and as well as the stand-up banners you see behind you and also as you enter the boardroom today.
Good morning, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board. My name is Jack Kalanick from IT. Today, I wanted to share our plans regarding neighborhood technology support centers, which are designed to improve access to technology support services and meet our customers where they are. These centers make it more convenient for parents, employees, and students to receive support like exchanging a device, changing a password, exchange a broken device, that sort of thing. We are launching these neighborhood technology support centers in all local districts. Three of them are already up and running. The remaining three will be online by January. There is no additional cost to these support centers. We are reallocating space within existing facilities and using our existing staff. And with that, I will turn it on to the next presenter.
Good morning, committee members. My name is Robert Rodriguez. I'm the Director of the Personalized Learning Systems. The MyVoice survey was created to give students more opportunities to have voice in what happens at their schools. Students in middle school and high school will now be able to use Schoology to immediately provide feedback through the survey using a platform they're already familiar with, possibly every other month. The tool was created as a collaborative effort between the Office of the Chief of Schools, Information Technology Division, as well as the Student Empowerment Unit. In May of 2023, we plan to make it available to all middle schools and high schools and the district with an ongoing cost of fifteen thousand dollars. There will also be reports development costs that will be determined based on need. Based on the School Experience Survey, our goal is to increase the feeling that students have input at their schools by at least two percent annually. Next presenter.
Good morning, Superintendent Carvalho, board members. Very excited to speak to you about our Family Academy. The Family Academy is essentially a three-sibling learning experience where families can first engage in webinars that really speak to the topics of academics, health and resiliency, civic engagement, and fourth, which is valuable to our families, how to develop their career pathways to continue being better equipped for the world that surrounds them in our communities. That effort is started in July, and we continue to see an uphill sort of trend of participation within our families, and we're building a strong community. The second component that is going to be launching will continue, start off later this fall, and those include our equity pathways, where families will be able to experience a seven-week experience in partnership with the Division of Adult and Career Education. Families will select a seven-week experience in early literacy, Black Family Excellence, multilingual learner excellence, and supporting our students to special needs. The third component is ensuring that these spaces of learning are available for families when they can engage. The third component includes adding these opportunities to an interactive multimedia library repository that will be embedded within the parent portal and the LAUSD mobile app. We're targeting to at least have three hundred participants in our webinars. We're definitely surpassing that effort, and by the end of the year, we're striving to graduate a thousand equity course pathway participants. Thank you.
Good morning, Shannon Haber, Chief Communications Officer. I'm talking about our new branding. So, major urban school districts across the nation, including San Diego and New York, have modernized their branding in recent years with bold look and colors to help attract families to schools. At LA Unified, we've enlisted the help of our pro bono agency and partner Creative Artists Agency and their brand studio to work on modernizing our branding to really coincide with the release of our strategic plan. We've created a new wordmark that reflects the various ways that our communities can use our name, and it really reflects our acronym and that we are unified. The wordmark colors represent the vibrancy of Los Angeles Unified, as well as the hope and ambition of Blue Skies. We are now in the process of unveiling the updated seal on social media, and our seal really matches the wordmark in color and vibrancy and represents LA with its sun and ocean elements. Our recent student focus group especially loved these elements and chose this seal as their favorite. CAA is now creating a style guide that includes the wordmark, seal, fonts, and colors, which will be housed on our website. We'll also create an inter-office memo to help our teams across the district implement this exciting new branding. We are in the soft launch right now, and we're planning to send these brand files in the coming days.
Good morning. Gail LaBarra Ortiz, Director of Partnerships and Grants. It's been a long time since I've stood here. Last time I stood here was Principal of STEAM Legacy High School announcing our world championship in 2019 in Europe. And today, it is my pleasure to announce the launch of our independent foundation. So, the Los Angeles Unified School District has asked me to support with, in partnership with our superintendents and my colleagues, a foundation that is intended to provide more immediate nimble responses to the needs of our schools. As a former principal and on behalf of my principal colleagues, I can attest to the power of quality partnerships. I can attest to partnership investments and what they do for the outcomes intended for our students and bringing the world towards students and taking our students to the world. This partnership, or this foundation, excuse me, this foundation is due to launch in March of 2023, utilizing our existing foundation. If we are to then engage or provide a new foundation, then we would definitely, we intend to launch in June of 2023, at no cost to our district and to a benefit for all. And our impact will be measured definitely by monitoring the progress of how many folks invest in our foundation, in addition to the investments to other priorities aligned to innovation, equity, and sustainability. Additionally, we are also going to launch our website. It's been in incubation stage now for almost two years due to the pandemic, and we're excited to be able to provide digital access and resources to stakeholders and those interested in engaging with our district and providing quality partnership services. The website will include digital access, information and guidance, and direct connection to our office, where we may support with fielding any questions to engage with our schools. We intend to do this again in November, and we will measure by the number of visitors on our website, inquiries, and surveys that we tend to field or will be fielding out to those who are interested in engaging with our district. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Keith Abrams, Executive Director of Student Integration Services. I'm here to talk about the nine new magnet programs. This is in response to a board resolution back in 2012 that asked us, the district, to look into expanding school choice options. And so, we have a procedure by which schools can submit proposals. They may evaluate the proposal based upon their content, but we're also very interested in achieving one of five goals. Goal number one is providing additional seats at an integrated site, like at Gardner Elementary School. We're interested in expanding, securing K-12 instructional pathways like with Carnegie and with Clinton. We're also interested in opening up magnet programs in areas absent of magnet programs like Minlo. And so, it's not just the evaluation of the actual proposal, but it's also achieving one of those particular goals. Thank you.
Okay, this is exciting. Born to Learn. In this, in an effort to ensure that Los Angeles Unified is the district of choice for future families, the Strategic Enrollment and Program Planning Office is developing an ongoing initiative to ensure families with newborns learn about our district and what it offers and receive the support they need to choose our district in the future. We are partnering with hospitals, and that partnership is being developed, and our hope is to develop those partnerships in a way that the funding may be provided on an ongoing basis that way. Next slide. Transportation Opportunities. As part of the Superintendent's One Hundred Day Plan, the Strategic Enrollment and Planning, Program Planning Office, also known as CEPO, has partnered with the Transportation Service Division to expand bus transportation options for residential students to their schools. This work includes developing new district policies and procedures and working with schools to offer these opportunities in our highest-need communities. Schools were identified based on their student equity needs index status, as well as their documented safety issues in the community. Costs are minimized because students are being offered transportation on existing bus routes to our schools.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Kang, Director of Transportation. I'd like to share that transportation has started eleven new electric school buses this school year, serving eighteen schools. There's a plan for an additional thirty electric school buses to be delivered this school year by end of 2023, and the purpose behind it is to provide a cleaner and healthier environment for our students, schools, and neighborhoods. Next month, there is another plan to purchase a second set of thirty electric school buses, and the scheduled delivery is the following school year, 2023 and 24. The cost so far is five hundred and twenty-six thousand for our charging stations at the Newman Nutrition Center. These first set of buses were purchased through the California Hybrid Vehicle Truck and Bus Volunteer Center Program, shortened, called HVIB, and also through our California Energy Commission grants. So, it came to the district at zero cost. This subsequent purchase of our thirty electric buses subsidized by our also HVIB program will cost the district six million dollars. The impact of these buses are measured by the annual savings in maintenance and fuel at estimated one hundred and ten thousand dollars annually, and a reduction of greenhouse gases by a measure of two hundred and ninety-seven tons per year.
Good morning again. Douglas Lee, Senior Administrator in ITD. The theme for me today appears to be Wi-Fi connectivity, and this time, I'm presenting to you Wi-Fi on district buses. The reason for this project is, again, to close the digital divide. Our data shows that students riding a bus spend an average of forty-eight minutes to school and another forty-eight from school. That's a lot of time. The Wi-Fi in the equipment is really an extension of the classroom, meaning the equipment on the Wi-Fi has all the security and filtering protocols as if you're in the classroom, meaning they could go to the sites they're supposed to and not go to the site they're not supposed to. To date, we have twelve hundred and fifty-four buses that have Wi-Fi equipment installed and running.
Saman Bravo Karimi, Director of Finance Policy. The online budget transparency tool we showed a demonstration of earlier, so you're well aware of it, will be measuring impact by looking at the website traffic, how many folks are accessing the site. Next is focus support for priority schools. In support of improving the outcomes for our one hundred priority schools, we've identified and committed to invest one hundred million dollars. These investments will strategically target the needs identified in the quarterly data dialogues between the superintendent and the school leaders of these schools. The investments are designed to be prescriptive in order to measure impact and to ensure the improvement of our The investments are designed to be prescriptive in order to measure impact and to ensure the improvement of our schools.
All right, good morning. My name is Eric Hanson, Executive Director in the Office of the Chief of Schools. Happy to share about our virtual academies. While in-person learning is generally best for most students, some families may want or need other options. We proudly serve about 7,000 total students in our virtual academies in grades TK to 12. Each of our academies has about 1,000 to 1,300 students. And again, this is part of our independent study program. We proudly have 14 welcome centers across our district, providing in-person services to our families and students. Thank you.
We're celebrating the completion of our Phase One of our modernization, major modernization projects. Our first ribbon cutting was at Cleveland last week. I'm nearing completion on the rest of Phase One with a ribbon cutting coming to your neighborhood in the near future. We're in the middle of construction on Phase Two, and today, we're going to present Phase Three, which is going to affect close to 10,000 students on seven schools we have. We're coming in with the definition of what those projects are going to be and the specific elements of work we'll bring for the board for approval. We're looking for, before the end of this year, in November, we're planning to bring five of those projects forward. There are two that are going to take a little bit more work, Fairfax and 32nd Street. 32nd Street, we're just trying to figure out how to fit everything that we want to fit in on that single campus, and there's some seismic studies that we still have to do on Fairfax, but you'll see those shortly after. Then we bring those in, an investment of $840 million as we move on to our Phase Three. We've done many projects, and a lot of those projects affected the classrooms themselves, but it was always incidental to the rest of the work we're doing. For the first time, we're bringing a program that focuses on the interior classrooms themselves. We're going to look at 50 schools, over 2,000 classrooms, and we're going to modernize those classrooms just like we would do if we were building a new building to bring them up to the current standards. And we're going to have the tech in the classrooms. More and more things we're plugging in, so we're going to make sure the plugs don't trip breakers when we plug in those extra devices. New paint, new floor, just a whole new look for that $350 million. We're going to bring that, that says third quarter there. We're going to try to accelerate that by a couple quarters, and we'll start early next year, bringing those in for those 50 schools.
Good morning again. Like to introduce to you our drop-in services for principals, and these are office hours that the Personnel Commission will be offering to school principals. And I think it's appropriate, considering the conversation we had this morning. Principals can discuss their staffing concerns, staffing strategies. We'll have management members available for them, and we think it's just an added service and another opportunity to help our principals staff our schools. And another tool, one of the number-one questions that we get from schools and from principals is, where is my candidate? Has my candidate cleared processing? Have they cleared fingerprints? And so this is a, what we're calling an onboarding dashboard, sponsored by the Personnel Commission, Human Resources, and with our partners in ITD who created it for us, such that principals can see the status of their candidate, and they'll be able to see if the candidate has cleared. And we believe that this is going to improve the efficiency, operational efficiency, and speed up hiring. Thank you.
Good morning. Eliana Davidos, Chief of HR. So we've done a fantastic job of hiring teachers, over 1,851 today and growing. So now it's about how do we keep them here in this system? And we've had an opportunity to learn from all of these efforts, our partnerships with national organizations, research-based practices, but more importantly, our principals and all of the wonderful strategies they're using to first and foremost attract teachers to their school sites and secondly, keep them at their school sites. So this toolkit will serve as an exemplar for all of our schools to be able to use to ensure that teachers stay at our school sites. Another very important voice was the teacher voice here, and they shared a lot of important practices that have kept them at the schools and attracted them to those schools. Next. So the Equity Action Network is the partner piece of the stipend for the teachers going to our city high and highest schools. It's a 20-hour professional development, and the beauty of this is that it's also for their administrators. So last year, we had 485 hires and attending this program. Their administrators attended as well. And this year, we're going to launch Cohort Two. And so we're very excited about that. Teacher feedback has been very positive. They really appreciate the collaborative effort and the opportunity to collaborate with people like them, teachers like them across the city and creating those professional learning communities. Our administrators have also been very, very grateful for this opportunity because it helps them to help their new teachers. Our launching of our new micro-credential programs. We're going to be launching two new ones, Equitable Grading, which actually launched on Saturday with 53 participants, and our Early Childhood Micro-Classified Program that is going to allow us to have up to 100 elementary educators participate. We also have a lot of other ones that we've been asked for. And just to make sure that I acknowledge it publicly, Antonio has shared that we also want to start a parent involvement micro-credential, which is coming very soon.
Good morning, Superintendent and Board members. I'm Dr. Smith Amelotra, Medical Director for Los Angeles Unified. So along with HR, the Office of the Medical Director has sponsored the EASE Program, which is the Employee Assistant Service for Education. As COVID-19 transitions from pandemic to endemic, we are entering a new pandemic, which is the mental health pandemic. And while many of our employees have health benefits, therapy can often be a luxury with wait times to get into a therapist and the cost. And so LAUCO, Los Angeles County Office of Education, has partnered with LAUSD to expand funding to provide every employee in education with access to mental health care, including counseling through telehealth or one-on-one services, a 24/7 hotline, and referrals to resources in the community. And this is at no cost to our district, but with all the benefits to our employees.
Okay, and I'm going to wrap it up with something specific to our classified employees. It is the Career Ladders Guide. It's a guide that helps employees, our classified employees, navigate the various positions and how to promote within the district so that they don't have to leave. For example, how does an office assistant become an SAA? And it will give them resources and connect them to training and professional development opportunities in other ways and so that they can stay with the district and maybe have a career within the district. Thank you.
So with that, we wrap up the presentation again. These are 49 new product services initiatives, programs, with full alignment to our strategic plan embedded within this year's and future year's budgets that have as an intended goal, number one, new energy around innovation as a means, as a tool of recruitment for our school system, boosting enrollment, but also modernizing the array of programs that we offer our community in addition to innovative ways of supporting our current and future staffs. So with that said, thank you very much for the opportunity to present this lineup to the board and to the community.
Thank you, Superintendent. Really exciting stuff, and great to see everyone as like a who's who of the superintendent's team. And so great to put faces to names and see you all back here. You all did great. So thank you, and thanks to Amanda for helping us coordinate all that as well. I'm sure there are some questions or comments either on the whole package and process or so many of the specific discreet initiatives. So I'll see if anyone wants to go first. Ms. Garcia.
I don't have a question. Thank you all, Superintendent. I do appreciate the organizing under the strategic plan very nicely. I hope that results come back to us at some point in the same fashion. Thank you.
Ms. Goldberg.
Yeah, I have several small questions. Under the instructional newcomer academies, I know we have Belmont, I know you're adding Van Nuys and Bernstein, but what about elementary newcomer?
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. We're actually analyzing that data. Approximately 50% of our international newcomers enter in about first or second grade.
That's why I'm asking.
Exactly. So we're trying to address that and that impact to long-term English learners. And we are actually planning a conference that includes that group of students, like the inaugural one we did for our high school students. So we are looking at the work and also what countries they're coming from. But I'm happy to connect with you with any ideas you have as well.
We had, when I was on the board the first time, we did have an elementary school that was our newcomer elementary school because there were no students in it, and we just used it for that. I don't think we have any schools that are empty right now. But I just think it's very important because a lot of the times, those parents really get no help with how they enroll their kids in schools. And so they don't, some of them. And we don't find them until they're in like seven or eight years old, and their parents are now desperate to find a way to get them in school, so they keep at it. But now they've missed all of that. So I'm very anxious to find out more about how we address the elementary.
Definitely. And we partner with Pia, who may be here, on those pieces, and we'll continue the dialogue on that enrollment piece.
How are people going to find out about the Adult Education Virtual Academy, which I think is a wonderful idea? But how do they find out about it?
Good morning, Board Superintendent. Rowena Legrosa, Interim Executive Director for DACE. We have on our website, the first thing when you pop up the DACE website is information regarding the Virtual Academy. That information is also disseminated to all of our schools, our principals. At our 10-day schools are also supporting it in order to be able to provide added instructional opportunities for our students.
Thank you. That's a very, I think it's a wonderful idea, and I'm glad to see it happening, but I just want to know how people are going to find out about it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next one is on Children's Hospital Telehealth. And it says that a partnership with the hospital to provide physical and mental telehealth. Again, how does a parent access that? So I'm a parent. My kid is, you know, it looks like maybe having a fever, but we've given them a COVID test. They don't have COVID, but I need to know what to do. So how do I access Children's Hospital? How do I know how to access Children's Hospital?
So this partnership is for also the students that are patients of Children's Hospital. Most of them have chronic diseases. So it's a way for them to see their provider without the parent having to take them to school.
So this is largely for people, students who are in our various hospital programs?
Right.
Okay, so I'm just a parent of a kid, and they got a fever. I don't get telehealth to tell me what to do.
We're working on that.
All right.
Yes.
Well, I wanted to know because I was going to tell, spread the word. So it's, I'm not going to spread that word, okay? Thank you very much, though. On the mental health career pathway, you know, I think that this is also, I want to raise something that I hope we will eventually take up here. When I became a teacher in the 1960s, there was something called the National Defense Education Act, okay? And they put education in a national defense word, and so everybody passed it, right? What you got there with the NDEA is if you applied for a loan to be a teacher, they would give it to you. And if you agreed to teach in what were considered inner-city schools, they forgave your loan 20% a year until it was gone. But if you just went into teaching, since there was a terrible teacher shortage at the time, which we have again now, you got 10% off. So you got between 50% and 100% of your loan taken care of immediately just by teaching for five years. I think it is time for all of us to have a full course effort in Washington to say that we need another National Defense Education Act, not just for teachers, but for PSWs, for counselors, for psychologists, for nurses, for anyone who serves children in schools that have, we have been unable to get people to go into these fields. And I think we should reach out everywhere we can to begin a campaign for this because it changed overnight, really. In less than five years, we went in the early 60s from having a huge shortage to not having a huge teacher shortage. It just inspired so many people to try teaching that maybe weren't thinking about it. So not everybody did it, and those who never went into teaching had to pay it all back 100%. That was their decision. But it was an amazing program. It got me through college, and my loans were all paid for because I was teaching in Compton. And I'm just saying, I think this is just an incredible thing to be doing. And while I'm thrilled to see that we're trying to start something here in our schools, once we do this, and I want to hear a little bit more from Pia when I finish pontificating on this other idea, I apologize. But I just think that we need to be doing a lot more to help young people see that there are paths to doing things that they didn't know of that will help them get their educations paid for. And I think if we don't do something like this in five or 10 years, no district in the country will be able to fill their positions. They just won't. People are retiring, and nobody's going into the field. When I started teaching teachers at UCLA in the Learn Program, we had about 30 or 40 applications for every position. Six years later, when I left the program, we were having a trouble filling all of our positions. In six years, it went from five to 10 people trying to get into that program that more than we had room for per space to now not even being able to fill all the spaces. That's what's happening. And if we don't have serious efforts beyond, and I want to hear more about this one, but if we don't have serious efforts to do something about this, schools are just not going to have staffs in a very near future. It's not far off. And you can see it with bus drivers. They should do it with every employee category, every employee category that schools in this country are having trouble filling. I know schools, because I listened to some of these discussions from the council, great state schools, that are paying parents to drive their children and neighborhood children to school because they can't get a bus driver no matter what they do. They're paying parents to drive their kids and neighborhood kids to school. I mean, this is a crisis. And the federal government, in my opinion, and the state government, neither of which are really responding as this, where the crisis it is. Now, thank you, I'm sorry. Pia, I'd like to know what this really does. What, it says that we're going to do this with 292 students. So what are we doing with those 292 students? Give me just a little more detail.
Thank you. Good morning, Board members, Superintendent, and my colleagues here at the Committee of the Whole. We're very excited about this opportunity, and it really is intersecting the work with Esther Solomon, with Division of Instruction, with Personnel Commission, with Carla Gould, and various other divisions. The concept is, we've actually hired three teachers out of six. We have teachers at Elizabeth Learning Center. We have another one at Hawkins and Polytech, hiring the other three, where we actually have our own mental health curriculum that's been approved by the Department of California, where children are going to learn to youth from ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade about brain science, community organizing, community services, all the way towards graduating with a mental health background. So you're absolutely right. I think it was Kelly Gonesh who said, what's the root cause of PSWs not being here? And there are various areas, but one is, we didn't see career pathways for mental health. So the fact that we mobilized, we already had a curriculum in the works. And then we're going to leverage youth voice so that they can help us in advisory programs, also the workforce programs, so we can hire them to come into middle schools and elementary schools to teach other youth, just like we did with culinary programs about mental health, right? And about the campaign, we're intersecting all this work holistically. So Make a Choice campaign and other strategies that we have put into place. So the thought is, we also have opened a new classified position called Student and Family Ambassador. If you have experience from these CTE schools or you have experience in our advisory groups, then you are hired at the high school level. And thank you, Carla Gould, for helping and her team to make that come into fruition so they can assist our so they can assist our PSAs and PSWs to do the work that we can do. For the first time ever, we can have teams at the school sites and teams in our Student and Family Wellness Centers, which also lifts the question you had for Lydia. We are setting up places where family can come in and do one-stop district internal services. They can enroll in school. We can address their language needs and the array of needs that they come into our schools, so that we can prepare them to go into the classroom with all the services they need. We hope to also add additional partners to that. But this career pathway, I want to get back to it. Once they get to high school, we are also connecting with city colleges and for their BA, and so that then they can become healthy start, Student and Family Healthy Start Navigators. Once they have a BA, we want to help them come get into their masters. So already, we're seeing success with some of our navigators becoming MSWs and PSA and PSWs. The concept is, and it's new for our staff, at a master's level, we need to be teaching clinical skills, problem solving, communication, all the skills that are lacking and have been disrupted in the last couple of years. So that then, the heavy case management, the heavy donations. When our babies are born, our Student and Family Ambassadors can support that work and really lift that layer of support as our profession is really with the ability to bring a whole slew of services to each school community. So thank you.
Thank you very much. My next question is about elevating school nutrition and food trucks. Anybody here to talk about that? Good, good, good. So the food that the food trucks are serving is that LAUSD food, just in a different format of service? Or are we actually having outside food trucks?
No, it is the LAUSD foods.
That solves all my questions.
Okay.
Because I was worried about some of those outside people who do hamburgers. There's more fat than there is meat and all that other stuff. But we're not doing that. I don't have any more questions. Okay. On the All Kids for Bikes, it says 50 elementary schools. Is that each year? Just going to keep adding or?
Ms. Goldberg, I'll address the question. The information we have is this will be for this year. If that's correct, I just want to confirm that with staff. But yes, it would be for this school year. I believe it's grant-funded, so that's for the duration of this school year.
Okay. Do we have any plans, though, for it to continue? Or is it just a one-shot deal? And if you weren't in the 50, too bad.
We will concernly look at that and get back to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. On the Family Engagement Family Academy, just want to know, in what languages can the adults take these courses?
Currently, our webinars, we are making available Spanish and English with closed captioning and American Sign Language. We are going to be looking into a tool that will essentially convert all of our video content and make it available in a broad range of languages.
Okay. When that is done, would you let us know? Because some of us would like to advertise it to parents who have called and said they can't, they don't speak Spanish or English.
Absolutely. Our goal is to set that up and launch it and include that within the Parent Portal. Thank you.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay. On the new foundation, it wasn't clear to me whether we're ending the old foundation or revising the old foundation. And why do we need to do anything to the old foundation?
So right now, the LAUSD Education Foundation is sitting with our Beyond the Bell team. And they have utilized that foundation to support their programming. What we're looking to do is be a little more nimble and more expansive in the way in which we utilize these funds, to ensure that they just don't live within one house, but they live within all of our houses.
So that means altering the nature of the existing foundation or creating a whole new one and closing the old one?
Looking at the one that we currently have and seeing how we might be able to rework it or continue moving forward with it for more and more immediate launch in March.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like, at some point, I'll ask for more information about that.
Absolutely.
Let's see. On the, let's see. The modernizing classrooms in 50 schools. That's different than our big whole school modernization, right? Is that 50 schools, like each year, you're going to try to do this with?
It's 50 schools under the current program and the funding we have. It is separate. It focuses only on the interior classrooms themselves.
Okay. And how does a school say, "I need some of this"? Or do they not do that? You pick them based on criteria or?
We're working with the area superintendents and the staff to try to establish the schools with the greatest need. We're certainly going to focus on the 100 schools with the greatest need.
I know that recently, we found out that the nine-inch squares on floors are dangerous if they crack. Do we have the locations of where all of those schools are?
We do have a listing of all of those.
Okay. And we're going to, that's going to be part of this? Or is that separate altogether?
That's separate from that. It's a different program that we have to eliminate those seven, or nine-by-nine floor tiles.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I just have a lot of questions. Okay. I'm, okay. Let's see. Just about done. On the electric buses, I don't know where that is. But I have been contacted and will share with everyone an organization nationally that is working with electric bus manufacturers to try to make the manufacturing of them, since there's going to be funding for them, to be more in line with looking at how they treat their employees and how they promote employees. And is their employees as diverse as the neighborhoods and stuff? And so I just want to say I'd like to have an opportunity for us as a board, maybe in a future community of the whole, Mr. Malvoine, to talk about it, because I'm intrigued by it. These are some of the same people who did the living wage campaigns around the country. And I think they have some very interesting ideas on equity and how to help make sure that these new firms that are going to be starting do some things besides just build nice electric buses. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you all for indulging me all these questions.
No, thank you. I saw Jackie taking notes on each slide. So I figured there would be a bunch, but they were great. Thank you. Mr. Sperelson.
Yes. Thanks to everyone for your presentations. But I want to just call out to Food Services and you, Mr. Harwitz. You know, Food Services has really improved. I mean, the kids really like what you're serving now. They like the idea of vegan options. They love your smoothies, your mango smoothie, your blueberry smoothie, your strawberry smoothie. They love them all. And this is something I noticed, and I know you know too. Go to the supermarket and see how expensive it is, how expensive it is by anything in the supermarket. So when I visit my schools and I go at lunchtime, I see these kids eat everything. They are really hungry. They really need the nutrition. And thank you so much for making it enjoyable for the kids. Otherwise, I don't know what kind of meals they would get, really. It's so, so expensive. So thanks again. To you and Mr. Singh. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ortiz Franklin.
I love that you look, because you assume I will have questions. Yes, thanks to the team. Maybe, Mr. Superintendent, just a big overarching question. All of these investments were in the budget that we already approved last year. Is that correct?
That is correct, with the exception of the possibility, as was the focus of some of Board Member Goldberg's question. Is this, for example, 50 schools, is that for this year or multiple years? It is for this year. Obviously, if we envision a continued expansion of some of these projects, then they would have to be reflected in future year budgets.
Okay. And I know we'll come back after our interims and if there are like adjustments to make the board aware of. Does the measuring impact that we saw on the slides here match the Strategic Plan measures of success? Because I didn't go through and crosswalk it yet, but I imagine there's a connection between them, because this is the next layer down. Is that right?
That is correct. A good question. So as we, as I said, and as a number of the presenters spoke about, there is absolute alignment between these different products, initiatives, and the strategic plan, if you really go down enough into the plan. And the presentation to the board regarding efficacy, regarding, you know, reaching goal or not, will be a function of the mid-year presentation to the board and then end-of-year presentation to the board. So the idea is specific to the outlined goals or sub-goals within the strategic plan. Those are four-year goals, right? So we need to chunk them into one-year achievable goals. And that's where these programs fit in, is each one of them contributes towards the attainment of those specific objectives and goals.
You anticipated my last question on that, which was, when will we sort of check in? And I think that's important, because folks are often asking us, you know, how to stay accountable to all of these big visions that we have. And it's a lot, but you have a great team that seems really confident and skilled and competent on reaching a lot of these goals. So looking forward to that. Couple of specific questions for the team. Maybe this is Mr. Aguilar on the Healthy Choices. You know, unfortunately, we've been hearing about stories of students who are self-medicating and overdosing. And I know that's a concern of our community. I wondered if the Healthy Choices might also speak to that, so that we are, you know, broadly talking to students about their options when things seem so hard that some over-medicate to the point of life-threatening situations.
So definitely making sure that we're addressing the safety need insofar as over-medication. That's something that's of great concern, and not just with our student health and human services, but also with our Office of Medical Director. I'll let Pia speak to a little bit more about the Healthy Choices and how that would lead to making sure that this is all about students going in the right path to making not just the choices in their, what they're eating, but what they're also not actually ingesting as well.
I've invited my team, so you get to know my fearless leaders, who really bring this work into action, because it's really commendable. We started this partnership with Peace Over Violence, as they had a very good campaign they launched one summer with our youth in a summer leadership camp, where they were talking about politics, that you have, make a choice to get engaged in politics. And then it went to healthy relationships. You have a choice as to how to protect your body. And then Judy Tason, who's here, really quickly adapted it with her team, Human Relations and Diversity and Equity, lessons for advisory about making a choice. As we got the information of what was happening and what kind of choices our students are making, we quickly adapted lessons for whether it's inhalants or fentanyl or other choices that our students are making. There's real science behind the campaign. It's really universal approach to cognitive behavior therapy. The minute you say you have a choice, then you can start thinking about your thinking or your behavior and your feelings. And then you have a choice to know that the majority of our students aren't doing, making choices that are negative for them. I really do want to take a moment. Judy, do you want to talk a little bit? Because what, the ability of our staff to take a campaign and make it really available to our schools. Can you talk a little bit about the campaign?
Sure. The Make-A-Choice Campaign is actually very powerful in its simplicity, that we make thousands of choices every day. We chose to come to work today. You chose to brush your teeth. And so really bringing this down into very simple, digestible lessons for students on looking at the choices that they make, short-term and long-term, possibilities and consequences of those. So this kind of mantra, is this choice serving you well? So that's kind of what we're hoping will go viral with the Make-A-Choice Campaign.
Go viral? Well, if the superintendent posts about it, it will likely go viral, right?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks, team. And then is Ms. Haber still here, Shannon? Oh, yes. Question about the rebranding, which is really exciting. I think there is a time to refresh, and it feels appropriate, given lots of the refreshing that's happening. Just a question about the cost. I know you said that it is pro bono for the design and in-house supports for getting things out. But what about like making new ID cards or like decals for buses? Do we anticipate that being already what we do? Or is there some fee associated with this?
Sure. So we haven't gotten there yet. So right now, everything has been digital. And we've been putting it out via printing, you know, materials, et cetera. So we'll build that plan out, that budget out, for what that's going to look like across the district.
Okay, thanks. And then I know currently, every division sort of has their own logo. Is there a plan that everyone uses this logo?
That's the plan, correct. Coherent. So we want everyone to use our new seal.
Got it. That's helpful. Thank you.
Yes.
And then my last question, I think is for Carla, if she's still here. On the foundation, the Engagement Foundation, I know Ms. Goldberg asked several. But I think when we started during the pandemic, there were common issues across. I can imagine, as the years go on, you know, a real desire to keep our equity at the heart of making decisions. So when we raise lots and lots of money, because we're going to get lots of help from folks, how will we keep equity at the center? How will we decide what we're funding? How to fill any gaps as we might have them?
We will be establishing an advisory council to make sure that we hold ourselves accountable, to making sure that we're consistent with all of our priorities as outlined in the strategic plan, including looking at all priorities from the lens of equity, as you have indicated.
Thank you. And?
And if I may, it's a very good question. Obviously, look, a lot of times foundations are opportunistic. They know where the money is and the focus associated with that money. And they go for the money. We hope to turn that upside down, so we know what our, what our drivers are, what our objectives are, where the gaps are. So one of the primary responsibilities of the foundation, this renewed, re-envisioned foundation, is actually to understand what our strategic plan is, to understand where there is a lack of government money through the traditional appropriation formulas, where some needs are not addressed, and really engage philanthropy, engage the private sector entities in addressing those gaps. So look at the foundation as an equity builder, right? As opposed to a means of accessing dollars that may actually increase inequity gaps that may exist in our school system.
I appreciate that. I used to work at a nonprofit, and sometimes these grants seem really great, and then they have really specific things that you have to do. And then it's not exactly meeting the need that you had initially set out. So I appreciate the direction to say, "We know what we need. Partner with us and help us get there together, so we can help all of our get-its." Thanks, team.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz Franklin. Okay, Ms. Garcia, I think you've gone. Ms. Sperelson, Ms. Gones, if she's on. Questions, comments? Kudos, concerns?
I'm all for them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Dr. McKenna. I think from me, let me see. One, just again, thank you to the team for coming together and elucidating these exciting initiatives. I think there are so many discreet programs to celebrate and dive deeper into. You know, two notes, I think Ms. Goldberg covered a lot of them. The one on the micro-credentialing front, I just want to make my periodic plug, that we have a credential for general educators in special education. We hear that a lot from the field, and I know that we're expanding. So I don't know, I see some nods for those who can't see the audience. But I'd love to get that up as quickly as we can. And then I think, because Ms. Haber was just talking about cohesion, a lot of these new apps and initiatives are exciting. But I know that a lot of parents now, you know, to access all the things that their school are on three or, they're still getting some robocalls and texts. And then they have the LAUSD app, and they have the Schoology app and the CSO app. And we heard about the Yummy App, which made me hungry, at least. And so just as we can consolidate, and I'm looking at Sohail and others, and think about how to make it easier for parents, so that that information is in there. I know there are some exciting updates, potentially even with real-time bus tracking and monitoring to the LA Unified app. A note, too, while we have you, that I think when you close the app or when you sign out of it, it makes you sign in all the time, which I know might be a security issue. But if there's ways to just make it easier for, like, to increase utilization without always having to sign in, just a plug from the field. But that would be my one note about cohesion. And a question just about progress monitoring that Ms. Ortiz Franklin asked and was answered. So any final comments, questions? Again, kudos, concerns from the board. Okay, hearing none. Thank you. I'm really, I will just say, the final thing is, I don't know who's running the district with all of you in here, so I hope our schools are okay today. But, yep, it seems it's all quiet. So, great. Well, we will, my team will work with the superintendent's office on some of these follow-up items from these three presentations. And I believe we maybe just have only one speaker sign up for probably. And I believe we maybe just have only one speaker sign up for public comment, so I'll ask Mr. McLean to help us there, and thank you all.
Okay, off we go to public comment. It looks like we have one caller on the line right now, and it is Mr. David Tokowski. If you're on the line, press star six to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes to speak once you begin. David, are you there? I've heard from you a couple times today about you already being on the line. Are you there, sir? Okay, is there one person in the audience, Ms. Rosalba Villanueva, are you here for three minutes?
Is this the PM meeting?
There is just one meeting today in Committee of the Home.
I have to say, it's very interesting to see how all of this works, the board meetings after 23 years with the district. It's, it's a pleasure to be here to see how hard everyone works, to make it work at the school site level, which is where I've worked for 23 years. However, at this point, although I'm an active employee, I am currently on unpaid, or paid as work status, and I just wanted to bring something up to the board. Last Thursday, September 15th, I received a certified piece of mail stating that I was giving, given notice of suspension and given notice of an unsatisfactory act. Now, it also invited me to a Zoom meeting to address this. However, the letter was delivered about 4:00 PM, the 15th, and the meeting, Zoom meeting was for the 15th at 9:15 AM. As I went through the packet, and it was about a 30-page packet, and I had to, you know, I was alarmed and had to read through it quickly and, and try to understand what it was saying exactly. It basically said that also there was a meeting on the 8th of September, and I haven't had access to my email this entire month, even to this day. I've, last week, I came to the, to the, to Bodri to get it, to get help with resetting my password, to have access to my email, because I know I have these meetings coming up, because I'm currently engaged in the interactive process. But it's a hard process to go through without LEUSD email access. And so I'm, you know, these, these, these are things that are being signed off by people here at the district, but I, I don't think it's fair that I'm being held to account, to attend meetings that I have not gotten notice of, or then when I finally did get notice of through certified mail, it was on the day of the meeting, at 4:00 PM, when the meeting was at 9:15 AM. So I'm here advocating for myself, but really, I'm also advocating for hundreds of colleagues like me who are in the same position, who it's just a very confusing, interactive process to go through. And I think that we can maybe like undo a couple steps, go back, and I not be suspended, I not be given that notice of unsatisfactory action, because the action that I'm, been cited for is not complying with the district's vaccination policy, but when I read the vaccination policy, there was a part where it said, you submit proof of vaccination, or you, you apply for exemption, my exemption and accommodation has been approved. So I have, I am compliant with our district's vaccination policy. And so I, you know, just, I, I don't understand, and I'm not, thank you for your time. I appreciate all of you, and all of the hard work that you do for everyone.
Thank you. I know the Superintendent would like to briefly respond.
Just very briefly. So as part of due process, I think it is, it is important for us to acknowledge that anyone employed, regardless of current case or action, be afforded an opportunity to receive the appropriate information and documentation. So we will look into this matter to ensure that that takes place.
I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tokowski, we're coming back to you, sir. I see that you're on the line. Press star six to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes to speak once you begin. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. I couldn't get through the first time. Mr. Superintendent, a tremendous, tremendous presentation. Here in LA, we don't, during football season, come up with 49 ideas. That's very San Francisco-based, the 49ers. We stick to the 42, probably, is a Jackie Robinson number in the Dodgers. Just a, a little heads up in the sports season here. Couple of things that come to mind, very little reference to the local control funding for formula, the requirements of the LCAP. You have a great team putting that together, but things need to be aligned to that, or otherwise, outside forces will be very critical. Second thing, dramatically missing with the United States Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights, hounding the district and districts across the state, very little presentation thoroughly on the search and serve requirements of special ed. And third, the buggy-boo of things, actual student learning. Not only the measurement of it, pre and post, like, we still don't know what got moved during summer school, but in social studies, and science, and math, what are the specific professional development things that are happening to move content along? Those are the three biggies. Board members, you were great on the early ed. You're right, it is still very anemic. 3,000 kids, when the shortage is probably 60,000, means that we're on 20-year plan to get the number of four-year-olds in, three-year-olds in the district. Also, very clear, there's a lack of understanding of affiliated charters. Thank you, Mr. Melvoine, for putting together an affiliated school. You can see both the principal and staff, lack of awareness of how we can grow the district through our affiliated charters, particularly our magnet affiliated charters. And to the magnet end, we need to make sure we do a dry run on the computer to make sure that everything's good to go for October 1. Adult Division, still anemic. There's over 2,000 people waiting to become applicants to be nurses in the district, LVNs, and so on. We need to really move the adult division fast and fearously, and I'm glad Ms. Lucrosa's helping out there. The extended learning accountability, the ESAR funds, still anemic on tutoring, very anemic. The programs that have been funded, we need to make sure we're on top of them. And on the HR front, congratulations on many of the areas, the shortages. Remember, we have thousands and thousands of graduate students at UCLA and the Caltech, at the Cal States, who are going into debt doing master's programs and PhDs. We should find a way to get those chemistry, Spanish, Russian, whatever it may be, in. And lastly, the test scores. We have not seen the test scores in any drill-down way. I think we did pretty well on ELO, given the pandemic, on English, but not so well on math.
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate your time.
Thank you all. It is, that clock is still wrong. It's 12:24 PM, and we will adjourn. I don't think there were any adjourning motions. Thanks to the board, and we'll be back here at 9:00 AM a week from today for our regular board meeting. Thank you all.